Right, we do not have a student rep. She is not here tonight. Turn, do you know? Okay. So then we'll move to our opening remark. Remark. Brother, thank you for joining us again this evening. As a reminder to all, we are here to focus on our agenda items and to continue to share details of our plan to reopen in a virtual phase as was discussed, debated, and deliberate upon a few weeks ago. Further, it should be noted that while the full board's direction is to start the year virtually, parents do have a choice to participate in the school district's plan or to choose cyber. Further, members of the board, myself included, have remarked that while this may not be the choice parents are seeking, it is nonetheless an option. We also recognize that no plan to move forward would have appeased the masses. The decision was based on a number of factors, all which have been discussed at great length. We have continued to receive many emails with legitimate questions and concerns, and it is our intention to continue to add clarity to our plan. With this in mind, please remember that due to the governor's mandate restricting indoor group meetings to 25 people and that which does not allow for any percentage of any room capacity, the best way to participate in a Springford School Board meeting is by watching on YouTube or Zoom. This meeting is not open for in-person attendance beyond a total of 25 people. At the start of this meeting, members of the public may comment on agenda items only. The school word will move through the meeting agenda. Then at the end, the microphone will again be open for public comments. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names and addresses of all individuals who speak to the school board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the school board through Zoom use the raise hand feature and when prompted, state their full name and address. Members of the audience are asked to limit their comments to two minutes to allow time for all those who wish to speak to the school board. School Board President may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. Please keep in mind that the public comment portion of the school board meeting is not intended as a question and answer session. Rather, it is an opportunity to make a comment to the board. Lastly, please note the first public comment session will be capped at 60 minutes with each speaker being allotted two minutes to comment on an agenda item only. This has been our practice for the last several weeks. If time does not permit you to comment, you can email your comments, theboardcomments@springford.net. Your comments will be reviewed and included in the official school board meeting minutes. The purpose of this is to allow the school board to move into, onto the agenda items. And with that, there are no other notes other than to say also, there was an executive session on August 12th regarding personnel. And then moving into the next piece would be the public to be heard on agenda items only. Mr. Olson?
Roland Olson, 711 Sourwood Lane. I didn't know Louis Carver Hall, but my daughter said he was a terrific wrestler, a big girl's basketball supporter, and an even nicer young man. I'd like to offer my family's thoughts and prayers to the Carver Hall family, Louis' friends, teammates, coaches, and classmates on this terrible day. Speaking on 2, 3, and 10 on behalf of the 800-plus members of the Springford community back in school council. The council currently represents the families of greater than 1,000 students in our district and is growing. We've attempted to open the lines of communication with the school board and Dr. Gooden and have offered the help and assistance of our highly qualified and well-educated constituent. Rather than inundate the board with thousands of emails, we've reached out on August 6th with a single email requesting and suggesting a regularly scheduled mediated meeting with pre-submitted questions and an opportunity for additional dialogue. Increased in-person attendance allowance for these board meetings. A plan which combats the rising rates of alcohol and drug abuse, depression, and suicide linked to students remaining out of the classroom besides the safe-to-say link on the district website. A back-in-school plan with specific and measurable criteria which supports the established reopening date. We expect this presented project plan to be publicly available and can include what is needed, when is needed by, updated status on each milestone, where are the teachers on this plan, are they involved in the planning, what parent input is being included in the plan, what will occur if a student or teacher has positive result reported to the Montco Health Department, what is the plan to interface with the health department on each case. We appreciated receiving a message from Colleen indicating, quote, "Questions you posed require deliberation and action of the board, which could only be done publicly," end quote. Yet, none of these, none of these questions or requests have been included on tonight's agenda. Our 800 members want to know why the Board President and Dr. Gooden, who together make up this meeting's agenda, have purposely ignored the council's requests and questions.
Okay, thank you.
Our members want to know why the number one item on the board is hiring a new HR manager.
We've hit two minutes.
Okay, Mr. Catalano, do we have any hands raised?
Currently have three hands raised. First up is Joni Weber. Joni, you may now make public comment on agenda items only. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name, your full address, and what agenda item you wish to comment on, please. Please unmute yourself. All right, moving on. Patty Sari. Patty, you may now make public comment on agenda items only. Please unmute yourself, first and last name, full address, and which agenda item you wish to comment on, please. All right, last one is Joy Crowell. Joy, you may now make public comment on agenda items only. Please unmute yourself, first and last name, your full address, and which agenda item you wish to comment on, please. Okay, it looks like we have no public comment.
Okay, then we will move on to the next piece in our meeting, which would be...
Before you, a couple things, before you move on to the action items. Unfortunately, you know, was referred to as by a resident that Springford did lose someone very close to all of us. And although we aren't publicly commenting regarding that at this time, and because of the, we want to make sure that the family and everyone is comfortable with everything that's going on, but I just do want to point out that this board and all, Springford administration and everyone involved with the Springford community is heartbroken by our recent loss and our community. And for those of us, including myself, who have known this individual for many, many years, it's so unfortunate, it's upsetting, heartbreaking, and it's terrible to see such a loss to a young life. But I'm speaking for myself only, I want to speak for the board. I'm sending condolences out to the family, and when the time is right, I'm sure that this Springford School District and administration will be putting out a proper message as well.
Thank you for that.
Madam President, with all due respect, we've talked about attendance of the building, attendance of people in the room. We're not at 25 people within this room. My math could be off a little. I just want to make a motion that we allow the difference of who's in attendance now to make that 25 work, be fair to the community.
Is there somebody waiting to come in?
Yeah, there were people, yes.
So if they're at the door, then Boyer can let, Chief Boyer can let them in up to the total of 25, including all... Were they protesting or were they coming to the meeting? Were they protesting or were they coming to the meeting?
I mean, I don't have specifics as to why they were placed there, but generally speaking, when there are protesting that would occur, whether it be this type of scenario or maybe even a teacher's strike, they're allowed to picket in a certain, certain area, and it would be on publicly accessible walkways. And that's why, well, they certainly can participate via the Zoom platform, but in sir, sir, this is not public comment. So they could do that at that location. I was not privy to that discussion, but that's likely why they were placed where they were placed. Now, in terms of if more people can come in here, if there's capacity, then I don't think there's a need for any board resolution. If there's room for additional individuals, they can certainly come in.
Well, you know what, I really don't care. I'm making a motion that whoever's outside to come in here this evening, this is getting ridiculous.
Does anyone go to second that motion?
I made the motion initially. I wonder, there's like 50 people inside. This is getting ridiculous. How many people are out there? 15? I mean, this is...
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments on that? Well, then we'll vote on...
I have a question, yes. I heard Mr. Jackson say up to the 25, and now I hear Mr. DeBello saying everybody. So is the motion for up to the 25 or is the motion for everybody? It's a little bit unclear, and I apologize, but I want to know what I'm voting on.
For clarity, I said up to 25.
Thank you very much.
So that allows four more people in?
That's correct. So up to 25. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
What we're voting on, we're allowed 25.
We were voting on the motion that Clinton made and that you seconded. We're up to 25. Chief Boyer, you can allow four people...
Three.
I'm sorry?
Three more.
Mr. DeBello is, I mean, they're correct. If the, if the motion was simply to go to the 25 amount, there's certainly no need for board action on it. Mr. DeBello's motion, I think, was seeking something broader, so there was a discrepancy. But ultimately, the, the need of board action is not there for simply just going to the threshold.
So we're okay with going to this threshold. So Chief Boyer, can you let them know that if they want to have, I believe it's three more people, is that our correct amount, that that can enter for representation? That's fine. Now, Mr. Fitzgerald, do we need to hold the meeting for them for public comment as they come in for agenda items, or can we move through?
No, 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 the public comment is set... I'll just answer this last one. We advertised how public comment was going to be set forth in our advertisement for this meeting.
It wasn't their fault. That's why I was referencing. Moving on then, we have four action items. I believe we should take them separately. So looking at the first action item is that the administration recommends the approval of the attached job description for a human resources manager.
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Comment. We have a process in place for moving personnel. We're advancing an item of this nature. This has not been vetted. This came, this came to the board on Friday, and we want to vote for it within 72 hours.
This, I bet you're...
This position, this is a revised title. Everything that we have going on in the country right now, in the world, this is the biggest issue that we have. But I'll do this, respect Dr. Gooden, this is something we can handle in 2035. This is just not a pressing matter for all the issues that this board has right now.
And I understand that, but also know that we also have the regular school business that we need to be advancing. I had asked that this be held off from the June board meeting simply because of those amount of things that were happening, and I had indicated that I would bring it forward on, in the August board meeting.
So Dr. Gooden, can you just comment on the reclassification? So this is actually a position that has been vacated, somebody has retired.
Yes.
Re-classifying their position from, to a manager level.
Yes.
And, and my understanding is the, the reason for that is a compliance issue specific with Title IX and other compliance issues that we, that have recently come about, especially Title IX being so huge and so many requirements being modified and imposed upon us in the last six months. If you could just speak to that a minute and just give a broader understanding, and then I guess the last piece of that is from a financial perspective, the financial implication to the district would be no different. There, it would be virtually a net zero impact. So I just want to make sure that I understand those elements.
Dr. Gooden, I think Christina did address you, and then if Clinton wants to jump in.
Yeah, the, the, the changing of the position to HR manager from an executive secretary allows that individual to pick up more of the, more of the load in the HR department. And part of that load is brought on by the Title IX, areas of Title IX that are happening. It is, it is budget neutral in its impact, it's simply taking an exec secretary, exec secretary, pulling her out, making it an HR manager position, and we already have the person for that, so.
So first off, Title IX has nothing to do with this reclassification. Second off, this was brought to the board in June, because I don't remember that. Right, so wait a minute, I'm asking a question, please. So you said that you were going to bring this to the, you were bringing this to the board in June, but you just, you were asked to hold off on that. So going back to Mr. Jackson, there is a protocol that we've always followed in the past, when there was going to be either a new position or a position change that was discussed at the board table, the board table agreed on moving forward with developing and putting a job description forward. And then we knew that this was coming, and it also gave the board the opportunity to ask questions and really understand, you know, what the goals were. And I'm sure when I read through the information that, unfortunately, I didn't get to it this weekend, I wasn't, but I did read it this morning, but I just found that why we get something thrown at us on Friday and we're voting on this on Monday? Why can't we vote on this next Monday? Why is this an action item that has to happen this evening? And nothing is ever budget neutral. We're creating a manager role. We're, and we're, the starting salary is at a base salary. That's, it's not a peak salary where this executive secretary was at previously. So this is a manager role starting at a base salary of $55,000, which would have other implications down the road. And then are we going to include to the motion that we will not hire an executive secretary for the next five years, when that comes back and says, oh, we really found out we need an executive secretary now? I mean, so there's a lot of questions, and again, I don't understand why this was thrown at us on Friday, and we're voting on this this evening.
Now, the, the short answer to that is, we need to approve the job description before we can hire the individual. So the plan was to approve the job description if the board is willing to do that, and then bring forward the, the name of the individual and change your title next week.
So in other words, we've already vetted somebody for this role?
Yes, we already have somebody that we would put in that position. She works in the HR department right now. I'm not sure what is the problem here.
No, the, the problem here is, we have protocols, we don't want to follow them. If I look at the positions here, Dr. Gooden, all due respect, you know, the major words are assist, serve, track, manage, maintain. I just don't see this being this critical item as of right now, with everything else we have to deal with. I just don't, as Tom said, Mr. DeBello, sorry, you know, three days, we want to approve this, and it's because we backed ourselves into a corner again, and we've already made the offer.
No, we haven't made the offer, and we haven't backed ourselves into a corner. I just, it, we've already spent...
I, my understanding about this position is that it is a renaming or reclassification. And I believe that it had been something that they wanted to bring forth in June, did not do that because of the other pressing issues, which we still have pressing issues, and we're not denying that. But to put this on here and say, we have an opportunity to do something where we're not paying more, had that person stayed in that position, that person would have continued that, that, what their pay scale is, would have continued to increase over time, as, as will this one, but it's within the same parameters. So as I look at it, I see that this is an opportunity to have someone go into a role where they would be doing more for essentially the same dollar, in which case, that's my understanding. Is that correct, Dr. Gooden? So, and with that, yes, in just over this summer, there were some Title IX presentations that I understand Beth Lees had attended, and during those, there was additional information and requirements and changes that will take a substantial amount of time to work on, in addition to her other responsibilities, which is why if this was done, it would facilitate that in a greater way.
Reclassification of the position has nothing to do with Title IX, so let's please stop saying that. There is no requirement by Title IX that requires this Springford School District to have an HR, an HR manager.
And at no point did I say it was. I said that the demand for the changes to Title IX would be more easily facilitated by having another hands-on individual, somebody that was doing more than just the admin piece. So are there any other questions or comments on A?
Just a brief comment to perhaps help. It seems that this is more a concern or an issue about the, the procedure of this and the, maybe the why. So if this job description is approved, we're not essentially approving the, the position per se or the individual in the position, perhaps between now and then, our Human Resource Director could perhaps submit a paragraph stating the why and some of the particulars, just as a possible, you know, to provide more context on sort of why this is important, because I think the financial implications are, with, with all due respect, very minor here, so just sort of to understand, you know, why might be helpful.
Okay, any further comments or questions? All in favor of A, of 2A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion carries. Moving on to B, transporting non-public school children, our non-public school students. Are there questions or comments on 2B? Administration has made a recommendation that we should go forth with transporting the non-public school students.
Could we have a little bit of an explanation as to what that looks like? I'm not sure that everybody understands our responsibility to transport public and, or non-public and public.
Well, Mark, you want to, you want to dive in on this?
Oh, sure, absolutely. Generally, under Section 1361 of the Public School Code, there is a, what I'll describe as an equity or equal analysis as to the rights to non-public transportation as well as public transportation. So generally speaking, private schools that are within the 10-mile radius of your easily most accessed highway would be able to get the right to that equal transportation. So essentially, take our district and then take a kind of a 10-mile loop or circle around it. When you have private schools within that, there is equal right to, to that transportation. What has thrown a curveball has been the fact that districts have moved to a virtual platform, and private schools, in some instances, have not. So then the question becomes is, does 1361 still apply or doesn't it? Okay. Based on my reading of it, it likely does not. There is some complicating components to it, but I suspected that there are arguments around that, and that is, even if you are transporting students to your VOTEC or potentially students to the district, but they're specific students, say, identified under IDEA, that likely doesn't affect the, the impact of 1361. Does that, does that make sense in, in terms of kind of a global? So this action item was brought forward in part because with, with what the district has, has moved to do during this first quarter, I would think there needs to be a, an approval by the board to continue, if they were going to continue on non-public services.
So with the offering of, or the recommendation to offer transportation to non-public students, and I saw, Dr. Gooden, you had indicated we're looking maybe up to 600 students, is that correct?
That's correct. We'd be looking at approximately 600 students that we would need to transport.
Have we done any assessment or polling of those individuals to determine how many students we actually would truly need to transport? Again, I know, you know, a lot of times folk, families may choose to drive a student as opposed to put them on a bus due to, you know, crowded situations and so forth. So do we have any idea of what real, what the real number would be, or?
No. No, we just know the, the total numbers that we've been transporting.
And what impact would, moving forward, have on any kind of potential savings from customers for the district at this time? So in other words, if there, if there is a potential savings from our contract for this first marking period, then what impact would that have on, on our district financially?
Well, we have, we have a, I know that Mr. Fink, who's not here this evening, is going to be, is working with customers, but we do have a five-year contract with customers, and in that contract, there's a stipulation in it that we pay for 180 days of transportation, whether we use that transportation or not. That is in the contract.
So if we don't transport these students, just to be clear, we're paying for it anyway?
Right.
That's a whole nother, my goodness, that's not what this is about, right? Because that's, that's, yeah, let's, let's... My, my question, if I may, is why are, why is, why is our administration recommending this? Or because to me, I would have stopped this and not brought it to the board. Like, I see absolutely no, I don't care, just from every angle, this is yelling, absolutely not. So, I mean, I, I'm just curious, it's the way it's written, it seems like administration is recommending this, meaning through some analysis or something, and perhaps it's based upon maybe the, the contract or legally, but it sounds like, well, we may not have to. So if we don't have to, I don't think we should be at all.
Well, I would think that you would still need a board motion indicating that you're not going to transport, am I correct or no?
Yeah, I mean, I would prefer that then, if that's, if that's the board's determination, I would prefer that then too. So it would simply be, and I can draft something up right now, let me, instead of linguistically think of it out loud, it would, well, I'm going to do it out loud. It would be a motion by the board to discontinue non-public transportation until a time that may be identified in the future. I don't know what that date is, so I'd rather not put a date out there until it's identified in the future.
We could have just added "will not" in this motion here, and we're good to go.
So I'm confused. People are, people are saying that we're not going to drive kids in our district to a non-public education, even though it's already part of our contract and we can't get out of paying the transportation cost? That's what we're saying? That's what people are suggesting?
We're paying, we're paying, we're paying.
Tell me, is that what you're suggesting?
We're paying if we send them, we're paying if we don't send them. I mean, what this motion really...
So why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we send them to get an education?
Well, that, again, that's a whole nother conversation, like, why did someone choose to pull their kid out of public school? And I can't speak for that. I would say that, for me, just sort of on, on the surface, we're not busing our own kids. So I don't want to be busing a private school's kids, no disrespect to the parents that made that decision, I'm sure they were, they were, it was the right for their family, or the right call for their family. Whether or not we're still paying our existing vendor, whether we're using them or not, is a completely another conversation that I think's been brought up by the board about having that and being able to work through that. I don't want to muddy the waters, that's all. So in other words, just... So in other words, just because we're paying for it, for me, doesn't make, there, there's still ramifications. I mean, there's safety ramifications on, on, um, you know, having children on buses that we haven't kicked around here thoroughly. It just does not, on, on, I can't find any good reason other than we were legally required. And in, in that case, okay, we're legally required. But I just heard that there was at least enough wiggle room that, um, we should start with, but you know, it's par with our kits, that's at least, it bothers me. This is just my personal opinion that we have to do it. If they elect to come out of our school system, then they should elect to get their own transportation. My personal opinion, so.
Mr. Fitzgerald, I did have a question because I was unaware, because I do know of several school districts in Pennsylvania that have all walking kids to their public school. Like, Mount Lebanon, I grew up in Pittsburgh, is one of them, Allentown was another. And they still have to pay for, to bus the, all the kids to the charter and the privates. And I thought that that was a requirement, so I was confused.
Well, charters are a whole, charters are a bit of a different entity. But if you're a walking district, Pottstown, for instance, is a walking district, um, they do not bus to, to private schools.
So it is a choice, maybe they chose to. Because I, at the last year's conference, leadership conference, there was a session on it on trying to not be forced by the state to pay for. So I attended it, so I didn't know if something had changed.
That's going, that's taking legislation that's 50 years old or 40 years old and trying to bring it up to date. Because right now, the legislation says that we have, if we are busing, we have an obligation to bus 10 miles outside of our district.
All right. So that, that would be my question.
Totally different area.
That would be my question. Since we voted, um, to open, um, the Western the other night, and we're going to be, since their opening, we're going to be providing busing, correct, Dr. Gooden?
That is correct.
And they are our students.
Yes.
And we've also said in our virtual reopening that if there are special needs students that need to come into the building, will we be busing those also?
That is correct.
So if we're busing those two parts of our own student population, we're then not required to bus the non-publics?
My interpretation of the statute is no. And now, but I, I'm not relying on any cases because there's no cases that give effect to this type of scenario. There is really only one case in Pennsylvania on this topic, and it's a case out of Pittsburgh from a number of years ago, which talked about, you know, equity in, 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 and how routing is done and the like. But, um, at least from my perspective, I, I, I can differentiate between, you know, typical pickup and drop-off versus tech school, which is kind of a curricular initiative, and special education, which is driven in part by providing a federally guaranteed appropriate program for students with disabilities.
But this is, this is a prime example of protocol. This is an item that should have been discussed with the board in public. It would have given Mr. Fitzgerald opportunity to do his homework, so we wouldn't be sitting here now trying to, trying to educate the board, Mr. Fitzgerald, trying to provide a legal position, and everybody's asking a lot of questions, not sure, and he's not sure. This is something that should have been left off the table or left for discussion and approval at a later date, once all the facts were determined and the information was presented. So ultimately, what we're having a conversation around is we're talking about busing students to schools that are open, and we're, we're not. I think that's kind of a twist on things. But anyway, I think what the, the piece that's missing with the non-public is that, and I could be wrong on this, but if my understanding is, is that if we don't provide the busing to these non-public schools, we potentially have the responsibility of providing the same type of environment for the students that they would have gotten in a non-public school if they can't make it to that non-public school? Is that?
I've, I've not heard that, that, that what they would have a.
Because I thought I heard that somewhere else at some, at one point.
No, I, I've not heard that, that we, there would be an educational, um, ramification. I admittedly, Mr. DeBello, I have not heard that.
Meaning they could enroll at Springford?
Huh?
Meaning they could enroll in Springford and get an education in that regard?
Well, Springford's not open.
We are open.
We're not in.
We're not open for in-person, in-person classes. Like, these are the schools that, what we're talking about sending students to, so.
That have very small student bodies, a lot of them, that are able to practice the social distancing and put those things into place. Did you?
Yeah, but you're making the comparison. You started the conversation, Tom, so let her finish it.
Are we free from, to the best of our knowledge, from any extraordinary, uh, legal issues regarding, like, if somebody were to contract COVID-19 on the bus, you know, that we would be held, like anything? Do we see any new issues or concerns legally? Is there a reason why we wouldn't take children that are part of our community that have chosen to go someplace else for their education, we wouldn't transport them?
With regard to liability in general, um, I, I, I view a school district as, as minimal to, 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 and I, I'm not going to use the word nonexistent, but it's very, very low, very low, both under state law and federal law. Now, whether the contractor enjoys the same level of immunity or not is, that's an open question, but that's not really our concern. So, from, from my perspective, I, I don't think if you were to approve continuing the busing, that that enhances liability for the district. With the assumption that protocols are being put into place, and we are at least aware of what they are doing to assure, you know, those safety measures, which I suspect the district has been doing with any and all vendors over the course of the last few months.
So we're busing community, people in our community to the VOTEC. We're busing students into our facility that, um, we deem should be in our, our facilities. And we have other people in the community who have made the option or selected to go to different schools. And I'm a proponent of public education. However, this is their, their choice, and so I'm, I'm kind of at a loss. There's no more specific liability risk, um, other than if we strong-arm them into coming back to Springford. But we would not drive, allow them to be transported.
I think another issue is too, as we talk about getting, you know, the in-person back, albeit gradually or altogether or what have you, um, we're going to need to have the busing there. And my concern is that if we let this go, and when, when we're talking about moving relatively quickly on that, just to turn around and get that back, what will we have lost in the meantime? And also, I, I don't want to burden the community anymore, one way or the other. I, I don't want them to have to struggle to get that transportation, even if they've not chosen to send their kids here. I don't want them to struggle with higher bills. I, I'm a community member myself, I don't want to struggle with any more of that. If the liability and the pricing are unchanged, why burden the community any further with another piece that we're going to pull back, hopefully in a couple of weeks? Because we're trying to, to get a, a more in-person reopening plan. And then we're going to, we're going to struggle and we're going to, you know, oh, we got to get this all together. I don't want to lose bus drivers. We also know how hard they are to come by and to get trained. I, I'm not sure what the timeframe is on that. Dr. Gooden, do you know what the timeframe is? If they would have to hire new bus drivers and, and train those people and go through all of that process?
No, I'm, I'm not aware of how long it takes. I know that the, the time to, the turnaround time has been extended. It is longer now because the, the training is more extensive. But I don't want the board to think that there's absolutely no cost to this because we do, even under our current contract with customers, we do pay fuel costs to run our bus fleet. We do have that cost, we, we pay that cost ourselves.
Is that fuel cost broken down as to what it is for the non-publics?
No. In other words, it wouldn't be one price for non-pubs and, no, I, I don't see that. I don't think that's the case.
Okay, any other questions or comments on 2B? And the admin's recommendation for the approval of the non-public transportation?
Mr. Fitzgerald, just for the record, where do you stand on this legally?
Well, I, I think I said that I, I believe that if you are not providing transportation right now, that there wouldn't be a statutory obligation to do so. Uh, but I also said, Mr. Jackson, that there's, there's no guidance on that. Sometimes I like to be able to point to a statute or a case and say, this is what it said in 1987 on this matter. We don't have that. You know, I, I would anticipate that, uh, whether it be here or somewhere else, somebody's going to challenge a school district on their decision.
Either way, do you think?
I think if you maintain it, I, I see a less, less likelihood of, of any sort of litigation if, if you're going to discontinue it. And it could be you, it could be, you know, it could be a district in Dauphin County, it could be anywhere. That would then give effect to whether there was an obligation or not.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve 2B?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion carries. We're moving on to 2C, which I believe is the flex day. Is that, just to be clear and outline this clearly, Dr. Gooden, that's the October 12 Columbus Day?
That would be the, that would be the day that they're allowed to, we've already pulled the, uh, under the calendar recommendation, we've pulled that back, this is a flex day, that would be the May 18 date. So basically, what we're asking the teachers to do is go through their Canvas training prior to the beginning of, of school and allow them to complete that. And we can track that to flex out of the May 18 board meeting, or the May 18 in-service. And that's, that's really all that is.
Is there a motion to approve 2C? Okay, is there a second? Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And then we have D. The administration is recommending the approval of revision two of the school calendar. Revision two starts us a week later on September 8th, ends us on June 22nd. My understanding is the flexible, flex instruction days, the FIDS, for which the application was included in our packet, would take us back to June 17th, which is the original stop date that we have now. Dr. Gooden, what would be the, uh, what would be the reasoning for this?
There are several reasons. Uh, I've mentioned before that, uh, we've had a hard start date of, of August 31st, and I pushed my entire team to, uh, meet that date. And I've stuck to that, uh, but I also know that my entire team is, uh, desirous of, of starting, uh, a little later for various reasons, such as distribution of student materials, virtual meet-the-teacher nights, transportation issues, uh, some technology concerns that, uh, for example, not only are you working on the backend of Canvas, but our tech team is also having to convert 1,500 devices and distribute to the seventh and eighth graders. They're just, there's, there's a myriad of reasons, uh, for the request. But as I said, you know, that, that, the, the team is working towards August 31st. They would, uh, ask that the board would consider this.
Okay, is there a motion to approve admin's recommendation for version two of the school calendar?
I move that we approve this.
A second.
Okay, and questions or comments?
I, with the FID days, I see that as an item 7D. It's something we would be looking at next week. I'd like to, I, I move that we move that forward to tonight as an action item. I'd like to have that approved so that we can continue to move forward. I think contingent upon the approval of those FIDs. And I understand that our approval tonight would be approving the submission of the application and, and not a final approval. My understanding is that, um, once we submit the application, we're very likely to be awarded those days. And that would then mean a net zero impact on the end date of our school. It would take us back to the 17th. I'm not comfortable moving our end date to the 22nd. So I'd like to move those FID, that item 7D, to an action item for this evening before we move forward with the calendar.
And Mr. Rizzo, can you comment on the FAD, FID application process? And the, I believe the expected turnaround time on that is November?
Well, that would be the deadline. PD would let us know by November 1st whether we were approved. There's the application process, and tonight's motion would be to approve the application, but also to participate in the programs, you are approving both. And that's if PD approves it. So we need to submit, along with the application, six lesson plan exemplars. We also need to submit the motion, uh, the agenda with the motion on it, and then the minutes of the, if it's approved, the minutes with the vote count. So that all needs to be submitted. And that, by September 1st, is when they want to have the information. But the minutes, they understand, because of how often boards meet, that could be a little bit late. But we will not, they say we will not know officially until November 1st, but it could be earlier.
So if we added a motion tonight, as Ms. Melton is stating, it wouldn't be on the specific agenda that we're saying, but it would be in the minutes. Would that be adequate to submit?
Well, it would be in next, it would be in next week's minutes, right? So then we would be able to submit this week's budget in next week's minutes to have, if, if, and again, I know that, I know Ms. Fern has, has backed up quite a bit with, uh, trying to pull agenda items into the minutes, so I don't know what her timeline is. But we would be well within our timeline to get things done if we did that.
Even if we approve it tonight, just to be clear? Okay.
Correct.
So Christina, do you want to? Do you want to make a motion for that? Or do we need to, do we need to finish the calendar piece first?
I move that we table the calendar until we move, until we vote on the FID.
Can I just ask you a question? I don't understand what the big issue is of, of finishing school four days later. How is that catastrophic to anybody?
That, that's huge at the end of the year. That's huge, it is.
Four days?
It's okay. For us.
Yeah, so especially like, for me personally, looking at it, my birthday's in June. So I don't want to have, be here in June, because I've never, I've never had my birthday in school. And I kind of like it like that. But it's huge because especially with seniors graduating, it's graduation day gets pushed back. A lot of families travel and it's, it's, I don't know how to like.
That's okay. I mean, the reality.
Summer sessions for colleges. In addition, there's, it's, yeah, there's a lot that's going on. But there's also a sort of a senior shutdown that does occur if you drag it on too long, which is also kind of a reality from having a lot of kids.
Okay, so Christina made a motion to table the motion for the calendar, which we have, until we have the other piece. Is there a second to table the motion for a calendar? Can we do that?
Well, you can do it, it just is very cumbersome. Is there a possibility that we could simply have, who, who made the original motion for the calendar?
I did.
Is, is it possible that, are you okay withdrawing the motion for the calendar? And then we're going to first visit the issue of the flex days and then come back to the calendar? Is there any objection to that?
I think it should be kept separate. I mean, separate from voting.
Yep, I just don't want.
That's, so we're, we're tabling, we're going to, we're going to hold off on the calendar, we're going to bring the FIDs forward.
I just don't want to table. Tabling makes it, is, is more of a cumbersome procedure.
I like that word, Mark.
Can we just withdraw, can we withdraw the original motion for?
That's fine.
Okay, so I, I hear that the original motion for the, for the calendar revisions has been withdrawn. So, we're starting over.
Yeah, starting over, so correct. So Christina, did you want to make a motion?
So I, um, I move, uh, 7D be converted to an action item. Okay, I got to get back to it. Sorry, different, different technologies in mind. I'm getting there, it's, I can do it. So I'm making a motion that the administration recommends the approval of the application and participation in Springfield area school districts plus flexible instruction days program for 2020 to 2021 school year. With the option for the administration to extend for an additional two years, consistent with the public school code of 1949.
A second.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I was fine for the first sentence. I don't know why we're putting that second sentence of the option for the administration to extend for two years.
It's how the law is written. It's allowed for an up to three-year approval window. But it really, it's a district determined approach as to whether they want to have it for one year or three years. So that's simply why the option was provided in there.
Okay.
It's a quirk of the law.
Any other questions or comments?
Can we open up for public comment on that?
Did you want to say something else?
Yeah, I guess I want to be sure that this will be totally separate.
Okay, then we're open for public comment. Any public comment on this agenda item here? Okay, what about on the Zoom, Mr. Catalano?
There's three hands raised, but they were already raised. I'm not sure if they're about this item.
We can ask, but they do need to be about this item.
Ms. Green and Ms. Fisher, is this about this item? All right, Ms. Green. Is this about this item, Ms. Green? Ms. Fisher. Ms. Fisher, is this about this item on the table? Please unmute if so. It doesn't appear that either person is about this item. So no, Amy Sitnick has a comment about this item, sorry. Amy Sitnick, please state your first and last name, your full address, and your comment about the item, please. Please unmute, there you go.
Hey there. Hi there, sorry. My name is Amy Sitnick, I'm at 5 Buck 2 Lane, 19426. I just wanted to recommend that you vote tonight rather than letting people wait several weeks, you know, to know what their, their plans are. People have to work, people need to make plans for daycare, and we can deal with.
Ma'am, 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 this is, this is not on, ma'am, this is not on the calendar. This is on a different item that was brought forward for action tonight, and that's specific to flexional, flexible instructional days. Do you have a comment about flexible instructional days?
Um, I'm sorry, no.
And there are no public comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Now, we'll definitely take the calendar separately, and we'll go to 2D. Administration is recommending the approval of the revision two, as we discussed, with the start date of September 8th, the end date of June 22nd, the addition of the flex days to take that back to the end date being June 17th, which was the original end date. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion again, yes.
Second. Questions or comments?
Okay, we've gone around and around on this. We talk about getting schools started, and we want to push it back to September 7th or September 8th. You know, my two favorite words are predecessor and successor. So everything that we knew we needed to do for school to open should be done. We shouldn't be sitting here telling parents, Dr. Gooden, you can respond after, with all due respect. We shouldn't be here now and telling parents 13 days from now that school's not going to start. School should start on the 31st, there's just no reason why it shouldn't, absolutely no reason. So over the last few months, we could have done a lot of things a lot better, and unfortunately, we haven't. But I know at least over a month ago or so, when we were having these conversations, we were asking very specific questions about specific deliverables, specific needs. What, what, what do you need? I mean, I remember Mr. Jackson saying numerous times, what do you need to make this happen? I'll repeat that because he repeated it many times. What do you need to make this happen? We've continually asked these questions. And I'm sorry, but I ran very, very multi-multi-million dollar projects. And when we would have management team come in to us and say, we need another week, we would just look at them and laugh because we're on budgets, there's a lot of other things that come into play. And quite honestly, we've been jerking the parents around for I don't know how many weeks, and now we're two weeks away from opening school. And now we're going to say, oh, we're not ready, we're going to push it off another week. And it's frustrating because we continually, as a board, in the eyes of the parents, we look like we are continuously failing. We continuously look like we don't know what we're doing. We continuously look like we don't care about what.
Tom, I, I don't think that this is.
This is my time.
But I, I just think.
I'm allowed to comment.
Name-calling is, you can stop.
I will continue as long as I want to continue, it's my comment.
I just don't think you need to name-call and say, you know.
Name-call?
Well, yeah, you.
I didn't name-call anybody. I said, we are looking like, in the eyes of the parents. I didn't name-call anybody. And we, as a board, need to, at some point, take responsibility for where we're at, the decisions that we haven't made, the decisions we're going to make.
Did you talk to every parent? Just saying, yeah, just before, when you asked me if I had spoken with every school.
Every parent in Springfield.
Good, thank you.
I spent the last three days talking to every parent. I mean, seriously, if you, if we actually would pay attention to what's being said out there and listening to the emails that we're getting and all that, we are continuously not moving forward. And if, if we think that we're doing a really good job, then we're kidding ourselves. And just pushing this, pushing this off, pushing the calendar off for a week, it just, it continues, just makes us look like we're, we're just failing in the eyes of the community.
Well, I respectfully, I would just like to say that I think that we're working very hard. I don't think that calling out the administration on this is fair because if I recall correctly, it was the board who talked about revising the calendar and who brought that up as an option. I don't think he came and asked us to push it back. We, that was the discussion topic brought up by the board about revising the calendar, not an administration. And possibly, we are disappointing the parents. This is not an easy job. This is not a job I would have asked for when I ran. This is a tough job. I'm, and I read, I talk to a lot of parents, I read all of the emails, I answer, I'm on the phone constantly with parents. And I don't think going back and bemoaning what a horrible job we're doing, I think, I feel like it's a waste of time. Let's just keep going forward, try to have a positive attitude, attitude and do the best we can. But I don't want to just look good for parents. I want to provide a good education, a really solid education. And I mean, I'm getting a lot of grief, and that's part of the job, and I'm not going to complain about it. I don't care how I look, I'm trying to do the best I can to provide the best education and keep these kids and the staff safe. So I just think we should move forward. We did initiate the conversation, the discussion. I do remember that as a board, and I know Clinton, you frequently say, and I admire it so much, you say to the administrators, tell us what you need, because you like clarity. And I know that we came to the board and, and we, I mean, we said as a board to the administration, do you need to change, make changes to the calendar in order to have the teachers and the, and the staff in the best position to start strong? And we are not the only group that's struggling with this. I think everybody is, but I do feel that we have a responsibility to now go ahead and give them what we initially asked them permission to do, which was to seek a change to the calendar.
Just for clarity, I think it was discussed with the board, but that discussion did not impact what should have already been occurring. The will of the motion should have already been there. So just because we had a conversation regarding that doesn't mean everything stopped or everything stopped.
And perhaps it wasn't totally anticipated at the time that they were going to need that week. But when you do the Canvas or LMS, I don't want to say LMS, when you do an LMS, a learning management system, there's going to be a learning curve. And we did talk about that learning curve, which was why when the vote came down, we went for the three years over the one year, because the first year isn't always your best year. So we talked about that, and even with that program, we expected a learning curve. If, if the administration is saying that they or the teachers are having a learning curve with getting this set up, I want it to be the best it can be. So when it, when it starts, no excuses, hit the ground running, full steam, do the best you can, have your curriculum in there, make this first quarter as impactful as possible. So I don't want that week, I don't want to stay in school after Memorial Day, I'm sure a lot of people would agree. But I think that if they need it, we do it, and we minimize the hit to it by using those, the flex days, the flexible instruction days.
I think we've thrown an incredible amount at our administration. I think they've done, they've been very responsive, and some of what has been thrown at them, we've thrown at them. And so if we're truly saying, what is it that you need? Was that only an offer up to a certain date, as of the 17th of August? You, you can't have anything more that you need? They've obviously said they need another week, or they need more time. And to say that there's no reason for that, I believe that in Dr. Gooden's, the attachment to this, there's a whole list of reasons that they, that they need this time. I don't see how this is the end of the world.
Mr. Earl, you keep saying that it's not the end of the world. The issue is, did we find out today that we need another week? Did we find out, did we find out last week when we didn't meet?
We found out Friday.
Before that, that we didn't? That's my point.
We found out Friday.
We found out, when did the administration know that they were going to need another week?
When, when did administration?
The request came to me after, really started pushing after the August 3rd board meeting. The administration began to come to me and, and really push for this and, and ask me to bring this forward to the board for consideration.
So this would be the first opportunity for that to happen?
Yes.
And in all fairness, as I recall, during that August 3rd meeting, we were looking at different iterations of the calendar, and we were talking about different options, and we were talking about FIDs and how they would impact the calendars and what they would look like. And so that was definitely a point of conversation, but no decision was made and no action was taken. So now we're at a point where this is the first time since, since then. So from August 3rd, it was presented to us, and now it's been brought to us for a decision. And this is the first time that we've been back together for any kind of actionable item.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Now we're going to move into board and committee reports, and we have Dr. Gooden giving a superintendent report, which will cover many aspects of our reopening. Dr. Gooden?
We'll try. Well, first of all, let me just, just comment that, you know, no one sitting in this room or anybody in this country for this matter has faced anything that we're facing right now. We are basically managing a hurricane where things are changing constantly. The recommendations that my, myself and my administrative team have been for the ultimate safety of not only our students but our staff, we have, we have a lot of students in this district. And so we made the recommendation to open virtually, as we did, out of a ponderance of caution and safety for our students and our staff and the community at large. So, you know, if we're going to be faulted for anything, we're faulted for looking for the safety of our students and our staff. So and that's really the, the motive that we've had, pure and simple. If anybody wants us to go back to school, any more than myself, my administrative team, or my teaching staff, because we want to, we want this to be over as well. But we are managing through it, we're doing the best that we can. There are some things that I want to share with you. The state has come forward with some new guidance. But the first thing I want to start off with tonight is taking a look at a informational video that we'll be looking to send out to our community, and it's really from our nursing staff. And so if we can load that up for us.
And not to interrupt you on that, Dr. Gooden, but I do believe Ms. Melton, Ms. Melton and I both asked at the last meeting for you to get some, either a representative from the county health department or some variable data from them to be shared with all of us. And my understanding is that Trish Smith, one of our highly esteemed nurses here, has been in constant contact with the health department. And did she put this together, or where did this video come from?
My understanding is the nurses put this together and they sent it to me, and I thought I would share it with the community and the board. So it's, it's, it's really recent.
As we prepare for the 2021 school year, the Springfield area school district has developed a health and safety plan that reflects guidelines from the Centers for Disease Control, our local health departments, and the Pennsylvania Department of Education during the COVID-19 pandemic. This video is intended to inform you of new practices and protocols necessary to promote and maintain the safety of our community when we return to in-person learning. This short video will explain the measures the Springfield area school district is taking to keep our population safe, the expectations of Springfield families as students return to school, the expectations of staff to promote health and safety, what to expect if a student or staff member becomes ill at school, and the procedures for exclusion from and return to school after illness. Springfield will be starting the school year virtually with the goal of gradually returning staff and students to classrooms as soon as safely possible. Statewide metrics for reopening will dictate when community transmission is low enough to begin a transition to a hybrid learning model. In preparation for a return to in-person learning, Springfield has implemented the following changes. Surgical masks will be mandatory and provided when an individual cannot provide his or her own. Plexiglas barriers will be installed in areas that are frequently visited. Reusable face shields will be provided to staff as needed for an additional barrier over the face mask. Gloves will also be available to use at staff members' discretion. The Springfield custodial staff has received recent COVID cleaning and disinfectant training. Per the training, school buildings will be cleaned and disinfected daily with high-touch surfaces being disinfected more frequently throughout the school day. Disinfectant wipes will also be available to staff in all classrooms and offices. Hand sanitizer dispensers will be mounted in all building entrances and in each classroom. All HVAC equipment has been inspected, cleaned, and serviced to comply with the recommended ventilation guidelines. Finally, designated custodial staff will be available for additional deep cleaning in the event that an area is contaminated by a confirmed or suspected COVID-19 case. The district has also established quality assurance, quality control measures to ensure proper disinfection. As we prepare to return to our buildings, Springfield's hybrid learning model allows for the recommended six feet of social distancing between students and staff. The risk of social mixing will be reduced through the use of assigned seating in classrooms, lunches, and on buses. Mobile triage units will be used by school nurses to assess ill individuals, and symptomatic persons will be separated from the general population in the building's health annex. Supplemental healthcare workers will be utilized when needed to assist with the care of our school population. Springfield will also be limiting building access to essential personnel only. Prior to students returning to our buildings, Springfield families will be expected to self-screen and monitor all family members for signs of illness every day, and they will be instructed to keep students home for any sign of illness until symptoms improve. Families will be expected to practice safety measures such as hand hygiene, mask use, and cough etiquette. Springfield families will also be expected to comply. Springford families will also be expected to comply with the most updated school exclusion and return to school guidelines for the Department of Health. Finally, transparency will be encouraged regarding family travel, social mixing, virus exposure and household illness. Like Springford students and families, staff are expected to self-screen for symptoms and to stay home for any sign of illness. Staff should comply with all social distancing and health hygiene measures. Mask wearing is required in all common areas and when six feet of social distancing cannot be maintained. Staff is also required to limit social mixing with coworkers such as congregating in halls, classrooms and lunch areas. Honesty and transparency regarding personal travels, social mixing, virus exposure and household illness are necessary to maintain the health and safety of our community. If a teacher believes a student or themselves to be in need of medical attention or medical assessment, the teacher should contact the nurse via phone or radio. The school nurse will triage and follow the most current guidelines from the Department of Health regarding separation of the ill person and appropriate school exclusion. Keep in mind that to protect our at-risk population, all nurse visits will be by appointment only. Students will not be permitted to visit the health suite without nurse notification and consent. All decisions for exclusion, quarantine and return to school will be based on the most current guidelines from the Department of Health. These guidelines are available for reference at education.paa.gov and on the county health department's websites. Procedures for follow-up with symptomatic or diagnosed individuals may change according to recommendations by the Department of Health. Please understand that while school nurses must comply with COVID case reporting to the Department of Health for the purpose of contact tracing, an individual's personal health information will remain private within the school setting. In the event of a positive COVID diagnosis in the Springford school community, close contacts will be notified by the health department and/or the Springford COVID task force. A close contact is anyone who was within six feet of a diagnosed COVID case for more than 15 minutes at any time up to 48 hours prior to the onset of symptoms. Be aware that the Department of Health does not consider the use of personal protective equipment an exception to this close contact rule. Thank you for supporting the efforts to keep the Springford community a safe and healthy place to learn. Working together, we can minimize the spread of COVID-19 and safely return to our school buildings. Please do your part to ensure our success.
Can we go to the, can we go to the slides that I have? As we're waiting for that to load, I can go ahead and just last week, the Department of Health and PDE provided an update, some guidelines on county designation. So basically, based on the COVID transmission designation, the Department of Health and PDE will recommend not order the type of instruction schools should be providing. Go to that next one, please. There you go, that one. Level of county transmission, level of community transmission in the county, low, it would be the incident rate per 100,000 residents in the most recent seven days would be below 10%. And the percent positivity in the most recent case, most recent seven days would be below 5%. And it go from low, moderate, all the way up to substantial. Substantial would be classified as incident rate per 100,000 residents in the most recent seven days or greater than 100 or percent positivity in the most recent days of greater than 10%. Take a look at the next slide, yep. And as I said, this just came out last week, the Department of Health and PDE has issued this guidance that will use these metrics. Remember the number of cases and the test positivity rate to designate each county as having low, moderate or substantial COVID transmission. Based on the COVID transmission designation, Department of Health and PDE will recommend the type of instruction schools should be providing. And this is over a 14-day span. Montgomery County is currently in a moderate transmission state where they would recommend either hybrid or all virtual as the form of instructional practice. In addition, the, once we do begin to bring students back in at the end of the first quarter, we will follow this recommendation for pre-K through 12 schools following the identification of a case of COVID-19. And it really depends upon what your county designation is. For example, right now, we're in the moderate stage. If we had one student or one staff, the school would not need to, would not need to close. We would simply clean the areas and public health staff would direct close contacts to quarantine. But if, within a 14-day period, if we had two to four students or staff in the same building or less than 5% of total number of students, we would have need to close school for seven days, five to seven days, clean the areas and public health would do the close contact quarantine if we're in the moderate. So what they've done is they, go to the next one, please. So we basically have this guide up there, which does three things. It takes a look at the number of cases within a 14-day period, that's the area in the blue. And then you've got the low, moderate and substantial categories. It depends on where we are as a county and the number of cases. So we now have some guidance in that and how we would handle that if we were back in school and let's say you're in, and we're in a moderate stage, we're able to provide hybrid learning and we had a number of cases within the building or within the district. We now have some guidance on how we would actually handle that, whether or not the building would actually have to be closed or would it not? And it really depends upon your designation of low, moderate or substantial and the number of cases that you're being found. This information comes out every Monday as far as your county designation and it's based upon a rolling 14-day average. So we now have those two pieces of guidance that we didn't have and this just came out last week. Today, we also received further guidance from the Department of Health and PDE that no matter what, whether we're hybrid or anytime you have students in, students in schools, they must wear their masks and the same for students and staff, that we must have face coverings even if we return in a hybrid situation. So those are two pieces or three pieces of guidance that we did not have until last week. The county designation and the protocol that you follow when you have an identified case within your building. So just want to make the community aware of that and the board aware of that, that we did receive that last week as far as some direction of how we make decisions about when and how to open school and what to do with those cases once they are identified.
I'm going to have to thank you for that information, but I can't, I can't read that. I don't know, maybe everybody else can, but it's a little bit, it's a little bit small. So I do thank you for that, but ask you if you could also maybe follow up and send that over to us in an email. I'd like to look at it further. Okay, I did not, I didn't see it on Facebook, okay? I mean, I saw, I saw the email about the low, the moderate, but I can't, I don't even know if there's words on there. I can't read that, so.
Yeah, there are.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of low. Well, just say that it really hasn't been a question of what we would do with in-person learning and when you have cases. And we just really had no guidance on that until, really until this week or last week, late last week of some guidance on that. So we now have that. And as I've said, the county designation of low, moderate or substantial is updated every Monday on the PDE website. So we can find that, so we can really track that.
And with that, and I don't want to interrupt your presentation, I'll wait till the.
All right. So just, just hold on, hold on that one and I want to move over to the update on the 7 through 12 schedule. The next slide. The board had requested that we build our grade 7 through 12 schedule to reflect our building bell schedule for virtual instruction. Basically, students are expected to participate in synchronous instruction for every class period in accordance with the building schedule. The schedule will be run on a regular six-day rotation and the goal is to create the instruction within the classroom as best as possible in a virtual setting. If you look at those schedules, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday will run on a synchronous schedule following the traditional bell schedule. And students are expected to be in live sessions via Zoom at the start of each class period. On Wednesday, students will continue to receive synchronous instruction via Canvas. Students will still be required to attend their scheduled class period, but we're working on Canvas. And that particular work could include pre-recorded teacher videos, targeted skill videos, independent practice assignments, assessments. Teachers may also lead small group instruction as needed. Student with IEPs may receive additional instruction and/or support and coordination with their IEP as needed. Wednesday will still be considered a day within the six-day rotation and tenured students are required to enter each class on Canvas to be considered present. So we do have the 7 through 12 running daily schedule as requested. And so we're working on that and teachers will be, you know, doing their, doing their schedules each day as we've been accustomed to in the past.
Dr. Gooden, is there a slide for that? I mean, you were rallying on, is there a slide for the schedule or you're just reading from a different?
Can you go to the next one? No, I'm sorry, I'm not telling them when to move. Yeah, that's that one.
Thank you. So quick question. The Wednesday, well, let me ask it this way. They're going to be using Canvas Monday through Friday, correct?
Yes.
And they're going to be doing synchronous learning Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, correct?
Yes.
And Wednesday is another name for everything they rattled off, more or less enrichment activities or additional student help or small group activities or whatever it may be, correct?
Yes.
So when, when we were talking about this at the last meeting, I was asking, do teachers have lesson plans already, right?
Yes.
So, and those lesson plans, when you look at, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you look at teachers' lessons planned for the week, they have planned out for that week, some instruction, some activities, some assignments, some group assignments, some one-on-one learnings throughout the week, right? Isn't that a normal school week?
Yes.
And that's typically on a six-day cycle?
Yes.
So why we, why do we veer off of that? Because at some point, if we ever get the kids back to school, why wouldn't it just roll right into what they're already doing at home through the virtual if they're just following the teacher's lesson plan? I guess that's where I just struggle with this.
Well, maybe I can.
I'm asking Dr. Gooden, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, for the purpose of having small group instruction, you know, doing that, breaking out, taking care of students with IEPs, doing IEP meetings, it is a day that would be used. It also coincides with the CTC. I'm just wondering, do I have Dr. Murray on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
That's a good point. So what you're saying is that if the teachers have to have a day planned for IEPs and they would just have it for that planned day on Wednesdays.
That's correct.
So that's more important than the other stuff that you were referring to. Right? Because if they're not in class, they're not, if they're not in the building, it will be harder to be flexible to meet the IEP meetings.
That's correct.
So then in reality, then that's why a planned, a specific planned day becomes important.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
I just want to say from a curriculum standpoint, I think as a board and even as parents, we should perceive cautiously trying to create an online virtual that is all synchronous. I don't agree with that model. I think you don't, you can't use all the benefits of technology in an online virtual. You have to be creative. A teacher, you have to let the administration, the curriculum and the staff specifically do what works best with the virtual experience, with the new LMS system, with that subject. And I think trying to fit it into a brick and mortar model just because you want it to mirror something or just because parents or kids want a schedule, I don't disagree that we need some sort of schedule. But I think that expecting kids to sit down for a straight four to six hours, that's not a good educational model when they're online. It's not effective, it's been proven to not be effective, so we have to be careful. I just want us to not make, I think it should be a mixture of synchronous and asynchronous. And I think that we should let the curriculum and the people who know how to do this best and teach with all of their knowledge and experience and their research do it the way they want to. And I think we should give them the tools to do that, but not force it into one thing.
I think, Mrs. Vazini, I think that that's kind of where the students are expected to be in live sessions via Zoom at the start of each class period. So it may be that that day, the teacher says, okay, guys, these are the things that you're going to work on today and then they log off. But then the next class may be a lesson and depending on, it may be very large lesson. So maybe the teacher's taking Monday and Tuesday to deliver that lesson material. But the next week, maybe they're only taking Monday to deliver the lesson material and Tuesday might be an independent project or other work to, you know, to be done. So I think one of the things, and Mr. DiBello, I recall you also mentioning the same thing when we were discussing this on the third, was, you know, really allowing the teachers to establish their delivery methods and the timing of their delivery method. So instead of pigeonholing them into only having the opportunity to meet with a class on Monday and Thursday, now it gives them the opportunity to develop the flow of their information and deliver it in a way that makes sense, given the use of technology and, you know, the complexity of the material as well as the way in which the students are receiving the information because it may be content that's difficult to kind of grasp and it might take a little longer. So I think that was the intent of kind of this model of the bell schedule. They had that.
Well, I agree, same as their.
Dr. Gooden, am I, is that correct? Yeah, you're exactly right. And as Mr. DiBello alluded to and you folks have alluded to as well, the students are going to log into their class as they would in a normal situation. But the teachers do have a tremendous amount of liberty as to what that class looks like in that framework. And, you know, it's not unusual for a group of students to go into a classroom and they spend the entire classroom or class period working on something. The teacher gets them started, welcomes them, they start working. So we've really tried to build that kind of flexibility into the schedule and we're trying to communicate that out to our staff as well, that we're not expecting them to sit in front of their computer for each period, all period, all day, every day or four days a week. And by, by extension, the students doing the same. So we have tried to stress that flexibility and that teachers do have lesson plans and they do have, they've taught these courses before. And so we've wanted to see that flexibility while providing the structure that students need.
So I just want to be clear because, Linda, I totally agree with what you're saying and that's what I've been saying for the last couple of weeks, is I'm trying to get an environment to let the teachers teach. And I think I said it that way multiple times. They have lesson plans, their lesson plans is a variation of instruction time, assignment time, group time, you know, one-on-one time. I mean, and that's what I keep trying to, we're giving them a tool, we're buying, we have the technology and I keep, instead of getting off this, we're trying to create this Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday and all, I keep saying, let the teachers teach. They have lesson plans, they have this already worked out. All we're doing is we're changing the location. Instead of them being here in the building. because when they're here in the building, there's some days that the teacher's providing a 45 minute instruction and then there's other days the teachers tell them to work on an assignment or review or whatever it may be. And I'm trying to empower the teachers and say, let them teach. That's what they do. And they have their lesson plans.
Thanks for the clarification.
I think so. We're, we're not asking them to reinvent the wheel, right? They have their tools. They have their, their curriculum. They have their lesson plans. They have all of that. They need to get it into Canvas and deliver. And we're changing the physical location of the students. That's what we're changing.
Okay, so we did ask the, the administration to more mirror like what the school day would look like. And this is what they came back with. So it must be more in fitting. They must feel that the Wednesday, the one day is important. I know that the lesson plans, the lessons that they are all there, that what you end up doing in a virtual environment is a little bit more targeted. You kind of cut out and things that aren't necessary so they can really focus in and target. It does require a lot of work on the teachers though to adapt these lessons. A lot of them not only are learning new technology, but they are getting in front of a camera. They are trying to figure out a lot of things so that, and the another component, so I, I don't want to oversimplify their job of you were standing in front of a class, now you just stand in front of a camera because there, there is more to it. And it's more than just a learning curve. But I also want you to remember that when you are in a brick and mortar environment, the social emotional part, students at a high school will spend that time engaging in the hallway when they come into class, when they are at lunch with one another. One of the things that the teachers are tasked with is replicating that social emotional component while they are on the Zoom setting. So I may have my students in front of me for, you know, 45 minutes, but I actually need to take time to allow them to engage in maybe the first two to five minutes. So that, that in that time when we're on Zoom and I wanted them, break them out into rooms, because we, I do believe we did get the Zoom licenses so that they can do that and have them break away into rooms and things, then to be able to say at this other time on Wednesday, in this case, if you, you can continue to work on this project, you should be able to reach one another. You should be able to reach me as a teacher or another resource, a librarian, something. So, but as a teacher, on those days that I'm following my schedule, I don't have that time to, if a student says to me that they need something, to be able to meet with them that day because I have to get to another class or something. So I think that this, there's a lot to it. And if this is what the administration felt more mirrored and would help for our students to come back in, but yet meet the, the virtual needs that I, I, I'm comfortable with this.
Can we let Dr. Gooden finish, please?
Can we go to the next slide? All right. There has been some question about the CTC in us, the district providing transportation to students for their AM and PM schedules at the CTC. We will be doing that. The CTC last week completed a survey where they asked parents in the sending districts to indicate whether or not their student, the CTC is now going to allow students to drive themselves to their campus. So we wanted to see the CTC surveyed students to find out who would actually need district provided transportation from their home to the CTC and back. And we have approximately about a hundred, low over a hundred students who've indicated that they're going to need that transportation. Our transportation department now has that and will be, will be building the bus schedules for those students to be able to get to the CTC. So that, that's in process. Last week we did, can you go to the next one? Sorry about that. Go to the next one. There we go. So we have approved both year-long and fall extracurricular activities that we will be running virtually. There are also some extracurriculars on tonight that we were able to get all the paperwork for that are also year-long and fall extracurriculars. And so I just want to bring that to your attention. That that is indeed on there, on your agenda. Next one, please. All right. I was also, there was also questions about when we plan on bringing students back and trying to establish some dates for that. We had determined that in working with my committee that between October 5th and 16th, we'll do our best to determine the, the teachers that would choose the FF-CRA option. And the ones that did that, we would secure appropriate number of substitutes and we would notify the school board on our October 16th board memo. We also would need to establish busing schedules for grades K through 12 back to school under a hybrid schedule and communicate to families. And we also need to prepare cafeterias to obtain the minimum six foot social distancing space. So basically what that is, is if you stand, you've got to have a circumference of six feet all the way around you. And that's how we're going to have to set up our cafeterias. And if you're questioning how we're going to do that, it's going to be desks. There'll be desks in the cafeterias to allow that because we just can't gain that with, with, with the tables that we have. Our recommendation would be that we would start the first day of the second marking period, which would be a start date in this case with the new calendar of November 12th. And what we would do is grades K through 12, we would come back to school under our blue gold hybrid designation. All students would be required to wear masks and unless there was a, a, a other medical or IEP exclusion. There was some question about whether the blue and gold groups would attend Monday, Tuesday for one group and then Thursday, Friday for the next group. And so we kind of went back and forth on that. And in talking to my team today, quite frankly, we can make both work, but under the, under the model where students that are designated blue go Monday and Tuesday, and then students who are designated gold go Thursday and Friday, there would be a five day gap between students seeing their teachers. So the idea was to split that and make blue Monday, gold Tuesday. And Wednesday is your, you know, your day of, of, of doing the work that students are going to need when they're not in class. And then do the same thing on Thursday and Friday. That way you're not going five days without students seeing their teacher. So that's, that was really the rationale behind doing the two, Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday scenario. But we can, we can really make both work, but I just want the board to know the rationale because I know there was discussion at the board table about why we were putting the Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday scenario forward and not doing Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And that was the rationale behind that. We're trying to, they would have more, they wouldn't go as long between times of seeing their teacher. And that was really the, really the, the main driver for that decision. So we can make either one work. But we do plan on monitoring the metrics as I described for our county designation, the low, moderate, and substantial. And as long as we're holding in that, holding in that pattern, we will attempt to open the school and bring students back under that, under that scenario on November 12th.
With that, would, would we maybe just be able to monitor how we're doing from a, a virtual perspective and then maybe poll the, the teachers at that point and see what their thoughts are in terms of what would work best for the students and, and for the teachers, whether it's the Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, or Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. I mean, I think we, you know, maybe we could make that decision after a couple of weeks of the online learning and get some feedback from the teachers to really see what they think would, would add the greatest value for the students.
And we can, we can certainly do that and, and monitor that, that, you know, that can, you know, that decision can be made before we come back. But we are looking at it, the first day of the second marking period being that date. We would, we would need to, as I said, between October 5th and 16th, we would need to do some things and, and the staffing is a big issue. Now the staff is going to hear this tonight. And so we have every indication that we're now going to be finding out who's planning on coming back or who's going to apply for 12 weeks to be out. So we're, we're going to ask the staff to notify us of that, which I'm sure that it's already going to start happening. And then we need to really make sure that we've got those busing schedules ironed out, which I think we do. But we'll need to run them. And then obviously setting up the cafeteria piece. So.
So back to the Monday.
Quick question. Is there any more slides or is that it? I'm just trying to follow where we're at.
That's it.
Okay, good. So month, the blue gold, when we had talked about Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, just on the flip side, I understand that reasoning about the out of touch for five days. But they would still have that Wednesday, I believe, even though that would be virtual.
Yes.
I think on the flip side though, was the cleaning option on Wednesdays and over the weekend. And then also rather than, you know, a deep clean Monday night, a deep clean Thursday night, because you're bringing in different groups. So you would have that option on Wednesday and over the weekend. And then also for scheduling purposes for our families with work schedules and, and things of that sort of, I thought we had maybe thought that that, that schedule would facilitate that a little better. So I just want to throw those back to you when you're considering and evaluating, but certainly taking, taking what the teachers say into consideration on that. Also with the with, with the hybrid, yes, we're, the metrics indicate we're in a moderate phase. So we'd be looking at going from the virtual to the hybrid. And our plan had been the first quarter. So we're staying with that. It was impacted by the schedule. The calendar changed tonight, but that would be the plan. And I know you have the teams in place as the board had mentioned to you at the end of the last meeting. But reopening in the hybrid, you still have questions, as you said, for teachers and busing and the cafeteria. So my understanding is that it's a mandate right now from, from the governor that if you're within six feet, the masks have to be worn. So if you did anything other than hybrid coming back, would you be able to do that specifically in the cafeteria or on the buses with that six foot mandate?
The, as far as, as far as wearing face cover, coverings, the, the Department of Health and PDE just came out today that students in school will wear their face covering. Obviously you can't wear your face covering in a cafeteria. So we are looking to create a situation where there would be a six foot, a minimum six foot between each student as they're eating lunch.
So you're done? Okay. I didn't know you're. Oh, sorry. I must have missed the meeting last week. Because the week before I thought.
No, that was me.
Huh?
That was me.
No, I must have missed the meeting last week because obviously something's changed from the meeting from the week before, because the week before was we talked about putting a plan in place about bringing the kids, all the kids back to school by the end of the first quarter. And it wasn't, no one, we didn't talk about hybrid. We, we talked about bringing the kids back. And if we, if we go to the hybrid plan as suggested, what we're going to do now is the students that are getting instruction six days a week or six day cycle are going to go getting, going back to getting two days of instruction with a teacher and then three days they're on their own. So we're actually, I mean, I, I don't, I just don't understand what's going on. I don't understand. And again, it goes back to, I don't think we, as a board, do we really know what's going on out there? What's going on out there is that we have unproven cyber schools now opening up in Limerick that for sure that there's two. One of them for, from what I understand are actually going to bring the kids and house them and, and do cyber learning. We also have parents and developments that are banding together and hiring teachers or whatever to teach kids in somebody's basement. So they're pulling the kids together. I mean, we have, we just saw in the newspaper that Renaissance down in Phoenixville has gotten overwhelmed with enrollment because the, the amount of people that are sending their kids there because spring forward, we keep moving in this other direction against popular demand. And they actually are renting more space to accommodate more students, which we're going to end up busing them to because we are, keep going and I don't know what direction we're going anymore. There was this whole conversation last week or two weeks ago when I talked about, let's put a stake in the ground, let's move in that direction. Let's see what happens because every day. Huh? Right. Dates and milestones. And then we could, so tonight we just threw out, not, I won't say half past, but tonight we just threw out back to this hybrid model, which we're still talking about blue gold, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, whatever. And we just threw out, we're going to say our goal is the first quarter, by the end of the, the first, the start of the second quarter. I mean, we're, we're just, I don't, I don't get what we're doing. And it's just, we, we have to get these kids back to school. There, I was, I was trying to find it. I was, I was reading a study last week by a Harvard professor. And then I got interrupted and I shut my computer down. I said, damn, I want to, I want that study. But the study was basically the students at the end of last year, and this is a, he did a national study, by the end of last year, majority of the kids that missed a fourth quarter. It was determined that those kids, which was the majority of the United States, those kids only learned half of what they normally would have learned the entire year by missing that fourth quarter. And that's predicted that if we continue down this path of virtual learning in the first quarter of the new school year, that these kids are going to fall behind an entire school year because they're not getting the education that they need, deserve, and warranted. And I, I just struggle with, we're, we're, do, is there a perfect answer? No. If we open the buildings, is somebody going to get COVID? Yes. If they don't open the buildings, is somebody going to get COVID? Yes. I mean, it's out there. We, 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 every day we have student athlete. I passed Westmont this weekend. There must have been 2,000 people at the complex. I mean, what are we doing? And it's just like, we're back to this, now we're back to this hybrid, which on the meeting October 3rd, that's not what we're discussing. So I, I'm just completely confused about where we, where are we trying to go as a board? Because it seems like we're disjointed.
My understanding is from the meeting on August 3rd, that as we got to the end, we were saying, yes, put that stake in the sand. We want to get the kids back to school. We test the administration with looking at what, what does that feasibly look like? And based on the metrics and the mandates that are out there, even though the metrics are only guidance, the mandates that are out there, this is my understanding is what Dr. Gooden and his administrative team is saying would be the next step. And if, if that's in fact true, he just presented the information as to why that is that in fact, the next step. We'd all like to get the kids back to school. They need to be back to school. There's no disagreement on that. I probably more than a lot of people on this board want my senior back in school. It's not that we don't want them back, but we have to do it related and in coordination with the information, the science, the data, the information, whether you believe the science or not, the data, the metrics, and what is out there. We had established a date. We, we said, excuse me, that we were going virtual for the first quarter. During that time, the administration and Dr. Gooden need to evaluate and absolutely prepare 100% for the next step so that we're not battling and going back and forth. If the full board wants to give direction to Dr. Gooden and say, no, we don't like this, what you're bringing to us now, if the full board wants to do that and say, go back and get us in despite whatever recommendations, mandates, guidance, whatever is out there, then so be it. What am I hearing from everybody else here?
Recommendations from the CDC is get the kids back to school. There are specific, there are specific.
Different government entities.
And they're all, and huh? They're all, everyone, every, everything is saying get the kids back to school. All the reg. There's no, what metric says?
Well, they say that you, the kids should be back in school with the safety measures in place.
And what, what safety measures could we not adhere to?
With, but there's a lot of them. If we go back to every single student in this high school, those hallways, getting from class to class is problematic.
And the mandate and their directive is if you're not, if you can't do six feet social distancing, you're required to wear a mask.
Actually, what about the cafeteria?
Okay, so.
You can't be six feet apart.
All right, so then that's a problem that we have to solve. So we have to, we're going to shut the entire district down because we haven't thought through how we could solve one problem. Is that the only problem?
No, there's always.
They have to wear masks. If they do, if they cannot social distance of six feet, you are, well, now the new mandate is you have to wear masks all the time. But it, it was, the mandate originally was if you cannot be within six feet, you have to wear a mask.
I understand, I'm not, what I'm saying is that I personally am not comfortable getting by the first day of the next marking period, everybody back in these schools, because I feel our, our brick and mortar schools in Springfield area school district are incredibly crowded. We have saved money, we've packed the kids in. And for better or worse, we're now in this situation that we have to realistically deal with it. If we have these many kids, this crowded in hallways, in classrooms, even if they're wearing masks the entire day, we're going to have high numbers and pretty soon we'll be forced to go fully red. I mean, that's what I'm concerned about. And then what has that done?
Our classrooms are not overcrowded.
I'm not saying they're overcrowded.
You said that, you said.
We have done, we have concentrated on a brick and mortar school model. And now we have to, they're overcrowded when you're trying to keep them safe in a pandemic. That's what I mean. Not overcrowded for, you know, April of last year, but now.
What is the problem with having an interim plan like it was just presented? We know how to go back to school with everybody, right? We do that all the time. We can do that like tomorrow. But if we can't do that, we need something that's somewhere in between.
But the interim plan for the 7th to 12th grade, we're going to go from the kids learning five days a week to two because we're bringing them back to school. That makes no sense to me.
Are they not having virtual learning on the other days?
Which is what we, which is what Mr. DeBello, you asked for also at that August 3rd meeting, that there would be a virtual learning option for someone that, for someone that did not come back or not feel ready to come back at the close of that meeting. So Dr. Gooden, was there any progress made on that piece?
No, we, we, we have a cyber option and that is the virtual option. That, that is the, that is the option, that to go cyber school. We can't do, we can't have teachers teaching class and doing virtual as well.
Do you recall Mr. Rizzo being here at that meeting and actually asking for that clarification?
Yeah, whenever we put the stake in the sand, one of the questions was, what does a virtual option look like? And Dr. Gooden did reach out to his team and vet that out.
So it would be Monday and Thursday or Tuesday and Friday with the synchronous instruction in the hybrid plan. And Wednesday and the other two days where they would be asynchronous on, and, and doing their follow-up. I'm not, I'm not going to call it that. I believe it would be appropriate lesson plans related to the curriculum that's built in Canvas.
Yeah, under, yeah, under a hybrid plan, you're bringing in, you're bringing a hacker student in each of your buildings. And those students are in person two days a week and they're working online three days a week.
So most, if not all, of the public schools, I believe in Montgomery County are going with a virtual design at this moment in which, whether they initially started out that way or moved to that due to all of the obstacles that they had to overcome and were not able to, or public demand, or whatever it was. So we have other states that have, start school earlier than we do. And we are watching some of them. Right now, we know that there have been some struggles in other states like Georgia in, in following kind of the guidelines that would be needed in order to bring our students safely back into our building. We're kind of watching the universities too, though they're a little bit different scenario. So I think what we need to do is to continue to monitor, look for a way if we could possibly open it up to everybody as soon as possible, because we all want that. And if not, to keep that ball moving forward. And that may mean that we end up opening it up, you know, based on information that we receive. I know that there have been some reports that right now kindergarten, you know, younger ages, under a certain age, like eight, don't necessarily spread it so easily between each other or between themselves and adults. Let's look at that as more data comes in. And maybe it would be a way that we can use some of this early time to transition some of those students in our building, let them see what the protocol would be, what it would look like. There might be opportunities to bring, since we have busing, to bring some small amounts of, smaller groups of students in, get them used to the protocols. And then move it on up. You are right in your thought that when we move, if we, if we move to a hybrid with secondary, that they won't get as much contact with the teacher in the Zoom. But the face-to-face contact that they'll, they will get on those two days with those teachers and that ability to see them will hopefully be, you know, really kind of make up for some of that. And hopefully by that time, those students are in a position that they're really comfortable with this format of what I need to do with my teacher, what I can do, self-directed. Not all instruction has to take place face-to-face. There, um, that, you know, there, there is that ability for students to work on work independently, but they need to know the procedures and they need to know when they need to see their teacher. So I agree with you in that we have to be very careful as we transition, if we transition to a hybrid first, and we have to look at that as a stepping stone to get them in. I can see in a high school situation, a huge benefit of bringing in, not bringing in everybody that first day, that they've seen all their friends for the first time again that they haven't seen all on the first day of the second marking period. And how that could be a real, you know, a real problem. I'd like to see them to get them used to, transition them and get them used to procedures, expectations also, so.
So when I brought this to the board on October, August 3rd, the point was for us to start planning on what it would look like. What do we need? How would we go about it? And I also said that things could or probably will change, but at least we're, because what we haven't done very well since March is we haven't planned. We're reacting. And unfortunately, we're reacting to stuff that's changing. And what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to forward think and I'm trying to get us to start laying out, what does it look like to bring the kids to school? Will it happen 100%? I said it on October 3rd. I don't know if that will actually happen. But we have to start putting a plan together. What does it look like? If we're sitting here saying that the only reason we can't bring the high school kids back to school is because of the cafeteria, okay, we could solve that. How will we solve it? I don't know. But let's start planning, because at some point, if it's not the first quarter, at some point, we got to bring these kids back to school. And I also did say that we could start the elementary school, and that's exactly what I said. We'll learn because they're their own buildings, their own buses, their own schedule. And they, and their own, and their own classroom. So if you want to start building out a model, boy, it's not, they're not guinea pigs. I don't want that to be taken away because, but if we want to start building out a model, there's a good starting point because they're isolated. And it starts to give us a look and feel to what that will be and how well it would go. And it will start to build plans around that. Because at some point, we got to bring the kids back to school. And I don't want to be here in October or November and say, okay, we could bring the school, the kids back to school. We're all going to be looking at each other and saying, now what? I mean, it's, it's just, I'm just trying to move the ball. And it's, it's, now we're back to hybrid. To me, we just moved it backwards.
So Mr. DeBello, I just, a question I've asked in the past, and I'm not sure that we've, we've gotten a complete answer and maybe would help us. Perhaps, Dr. Gooden, if you could work with your team to identify what are the barriers to getting the students back in the buildings at 100%? And if you could provide that information to us, that would be very helpful. And if lunch is the issue, then we can start talking about alternative options for that. If it's the hallways and, and moving from class to class, then let's talk about that. If it's busing and transportation, then let's talk about that. But if we don't know what those barriers are to getting the students back in the building, we're just going to continue to talk in circles. So perhaps that's a first step for us to then be able to identify where, where that line in the sand is. And Mr. DeBello, you know, if we can get that information by next week, then perhaps we can draw that line in the sand.
Look, it's not a line, it's a stake.
I'm sorry, the steak.
Okay, Ms. Fazini.
Ribeye, New York strip, I don't remember.
Ms. Fazini, help me out with this, all right? We keep talking about the cafeteria. There is, real simple, there is X amount of square footage in here. You calculate by six or you calculate by three. Structurally, the corridors are not going to move. This building is designed the way it's designed and none of that's going to change. So our modification has just got to fit what we have.
And perhaps we have staggered times. We, you know.
Yeah, we got to really think out of the box there.
I agree.
We, we understand that we're sitting and hypothesizing, well, how to solve a problem we've been working on for months. And first of all, and secondly, guys, we are in the midst of a global pandemic. I cannot mitigate the impact of a germ. I can't. You put concentrations of students in this building, it's going to close down.
I think to Christina's, to Mrs. Mountain's question about tell us what the obstacles are. What I heard when Dr. Gooden spoke was here's why we're, we're saying that we should go hybrid. Because of teachers, because of busing, because of crowds, because of sheer numbers. Tech school is able to open because the numbers are lower. So they're able to mitigate this. They're not having lunches, they're AM and PM sessions. They, you know, they don't have the crowds, they've addressed the busing, they have substitutes lined up, right? So that, that was, that's the tech school. Some of the other smaller schools, some of the, the private schools, some of the Catholic grade schools, some of those, you know, they're able to go because they don't have the numbers that we have. And I do think it comes down to that. I don't see us being able to mitigate the numbers. I mean, you're still, and they, and you said earlier, Dr. Gooden, that even if someone, I believe it was in the nurses' presentation, that if someone is exposed for 15 minutes, even with a mask on, then there's still a report that's made, contact tracing and, and things of that, that sort. So keeping all of that in mind, I, I'm not, I think the answers to those questions in many ways were reflected in, in Dr. Gooden's explanation or reasoning why her, hearing the board directive on August 3rd saying, in discussions with his administration saying, this is what our next step can be, based on the guidance that's out there, based on the mandate that's out there. This is what the, this is what we can do. Now, if the full board wants to give direction to Dr. Gooden to go back to the administrative team and say, this is not how we want to do it, we want to do it differently, solve the problems, we want everybody back in, you know, end of the first quarter or another specific date, then so be it. But I would want to hear from everybody here to say, that's the direction that we're going to go.
I'm sorry, perhaps, maybe I wasn't clear. What, I, I wasn't suggesting that we're not going in the right direction, but what I was suggesting is for the next step, if we have a complete list of what those issues are, then I think we're in the know. The challenge, I think, that we've had sitting around the board table is that we don't always know. And then something comes up, which is, which makes perfect sense. And had we known that previously, maybe we wouldn't have pushed so hard or maybe we wouldn't. But if we have that complete list and we open up the lines of communication in terms of where are the issues, what are the sticking points, what are the barriers, what's preventing us from getting back to school? Then we know, and then maybe we can help be part of the solution as opposed to continuing to ask the same questions and go in a circle. Because we're all frustrated with that. We all feel that at times that we're not moving as far forward as we want. But in the, in reality, this district has done a lot. Dr. Gooden and the administrative staff have certainly taken on a huge task and they have moved it forward. And every time we see a presentation, there's more information that validates that. But we just don't know what we don't know, and that's been a challenge. So my ask, and I don't know if anybody else would be interested, but my ask would be, you know, I think that, that this is starting to move in the right direction. Please provide us with what that next level, what, what is it going to take? What hurdles do we need to clear before we can get students back in the building at 100%? That's my ask.
Ms. Melton, you make this sound like it's more complicated than it is.
That was a pretty straightforward, easy, easy.
It just isn't. We're, we are revising the way we operate. That's all we're doing. That is, at the end of the day, all due respect to you, that's all we're doing. We're revising the way we operate. So all the barriers that you speak of, we know what they are.
Oh, yes, I mean, we, yes, we can all rattle off certain ones. But I, I will tell you, I don't know the, every activity and every challenge that is being faced by administration. And without having that knowledge and without understanding what those pain points are, I can't support administration, nor can I help move this district forward to meet the needs of our students and of our community.
So, so we are all, as we, I said before several months ago, building the airplane in the air on this. I don't think, I don't agree with you. I don't think that we are all reacting any less slowly than any other district, at least. Well, maybe you didn't, you didn't say, you said we're reacting all the time. I don't see how we can get around reacting because we're in a pandemic situation. I think that the administration knows what they, what the, what obstacles they have in place. I think their main obstacle right now is to get school open. There was the getting, transitioning in March to kids were learning virtually and getting through that, then figuring out what we were going to do with the summer months. Then there was figuring out how we were going to open up the school. Now let's, I, I feel that we should let them open school, focus on getting the school up and running in the virtual setting and be prepared, maybe it needs to be September or whatever, in letting us know the options for different plans. I tend to think that the hybrid was one of the considerations in reflecting on how we can transition back. But the, the nuances, I feel very comfortable that the administration is looking at all of them. And it is, it is complicated. It's not just a matter of the cafeteria, it's the bathroom in the cafeteria. How do we let kids go? How many can go into the bathroom? And it's a child that needs a snack open. I mean, there's a lot of things. I trust that they're going to, to let us know what they need of us at this point. So I, um,
So when I said that, when I said that we're reacting, what I was saying is that everyone is reacting because the information is changing every day. I'm trying to shift the paradigm. The reason why I'm trying to shift the paradigm is for a prime example, what we saw this evening. Over four or five weeks ago, Mr. Jackson sat here when we were talking about LMS in Canvas and the specific questions that we were asking. He asked, what do you need to make this happen? Will this happen? Can this happen? I asked, are we sure that we're going to be able to achieve this by this time? They were the questions that we were asked, that we asked. The answers that we got were yes. They were the answers. Now, I get it, things change week after week, right? And the reason you know that your deliverable date changes week after week is when Mr. Jackson talks about predecessors and successors, that's what drives that change. So when you don't achieve something as planned, a date could change. What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to shift this paradigm, get away from the hybrid, get away from the colors, get away from all of it, and stay there and say, if we want to bring the kids back to school, and all I said was, we're going to put a stake in the sand. Because if you want to plan accordingly, you have to have an end date. And I said, let's put a stake in the ground and let's plan to bring the kids back to school. And what will that look like? And then we could start to, we could start to lay that out and we could start to determine, what's the dependencies, what are, what are the successes, all this stuff? This is what planning is. And this is what we need to do. And can it happen by the end of the first quarter? I don't know. I said this on October 3rd, something may happen. I'm, I'm sorry, August 3rd. Something may happen to derail whatever. But then we put that into the plan and we say, okay, well, the new end date is this, based on what we just learned. We're not doing that. We just threw out, and there's nothing to. We just threw out, and there's nothing to support this. We just threw out by the first day of the second quarter, we're going to go hybrid. We just threw that out there. What evidence do we have to support that?
Who threw that out there?
Dr. Gooden.
Why did he throw that out there?
I have no idea. I said, I must have missed the meeting last week.
No, he said it tonight. Why did he throw that out there?
I don't know. I said that earlier.
Clarify for Mr. DeBello why you suggested hybrid.
Well...
I didn't say that. I said we picked a date. We said the first day of the second quarter. Why are we picking that date? What's so special about that?
Because we have already voted nine to zero that we were going virtual for the first quarter. That's why, that's where that date came from.
We have to have some goal. Maybe we can't achieve that goal, but what are we going to do? Just at some point, say, we're going to go back to school? I'm just, it's just something to aim for. Maybe we don't get there. Maybe when it gets to that point, no, we're going to have to stay where we are. But why not have a goal?
So rephrase it, so rephrase it.
And that doesn't happen often.
I just, sorry, Diane. I just, I don't know how else to say. I'd said it in the most simplest terms, and I said, I'm sitting here with a very intelligent board, and I'm sitting here with a very intelligent administration. So obviously, I'm not communicating to break it through. I just, I just can't under, I don't know. And then I said that, I'm repeating what I said because my mic was off. And then I said that I believe Christina is on board with what I'm saying because I thought I heard her repeat back what I was saying in agreement that we, well, she used draw a line in the sand, which is not what I said. But I'm just trying to break through, and I'm like, we, I don't know. I just don't know.
So if there's a, there is now a line in the sand. There is, there's a line in the sand, which would be November 12th to go hybrid. So what about looking at that stake in the sand? Let's now look to the next step beyond the line where the stake is going to be.
Well, that's actually, if you don't mind, sorry. It's like a game show. So this is sort of, I mean, I didn't, this was the first that I had seen, and maybe I missed something, what the plan for 11-12 was. And so perhaps, and it was almost an oh, by the way, at the end of our superintendent's presentation. I would like to say that I'd like to explore more. And I'm not sure, Mr. DeBello, if that's what you're saying. But I'm not happy with just our plan being 11-12, we go hybrid. I mean, if you're throwing that out there to say, give me some direction, board, that would be some direction that this board member would like to see, some more effort around, can we bring in, you know, K through six? Can we bring in, can we just, you know, be more creative than just hybrid? Because we're, at least that's my opinion. Again, there's been a lot of dialogue around that. I don't know if that helps simplify. But I'd like to see more work around what does 11-12 look like.
Do we need another committee on, you know, this? No, I know, I know. But, you know, some of this discussion can get done not during this time so that we have that opportunity to share, to hear the information, and then bring it to the workshop. I'm new to how these work, but, or should it be part of like the curriculum committee or something? I'm getting a lot of no nods, but...
I think it crosses so many different committees, I'm not sure if that would be feasible.
Well, Mr. Jackson is saying that we have a committee for this.
You have a committee.
So do we need board representation on that committee, so to increase communication? Any, anyone?
I'll volunteer my services without any reservation.
What, was this, was 11-12, this recommendation, the result of the work of a committee?
11-12 was the result of, we voted nine to zero and said, end of the first quarter. And when Dr. Gooden, from what I'm hearing, when he met with his administrative team, they kept that target date because that is what we voted on, and gave them that specific direction. We did vote on that, that we would start virtual for the first quarter. That's right, that's right. The first quarter ends on the 11th.
The only thing we voted on...
Exactly. So, and I agree with, you know, Mr. Schaefer and you, Tom, Mr. DeBello, that if it is, you know, hybrid doesn't have to look like the hybrid that's here on paper. That can be adjusted in other ways. It can be that K through six comes back, and it's hybrid for others, or it's a different plan altogether. All we're saying is that the way the mandates and the recommendations are now, to plan to open it fully by the end of the first quarter seems to be an impossibility with what we have. At least, that's what I'm hearing. And that Dr. Gooden and the administration are saying they can look at alternatives, and if we shape those, or that committee shapes those alternatives to be an alternate of the hybrid plan we have that was presented to us before, then so be it. Let it be, let it be an alternative to that. Let it be something while we're bringing them all in.
I mean, just a point of reference, so it's approximately three months in the future here that we're talking about. So I can't remember three months ago. Things might change, but I would like to see, and I'm happy to volunteer my services along with Mr. Jackson to participate in a collaboration to come up with some creative ideas on what does 11-12 look like, if not things beforehand. I'd like us to be as creative as possible. And I apologize if I missed that, or if I'm in any way, shape, or form insulting someone that, you know, worked a lot on making this recommendation of going hybrid on 11-12. I just, I feel like more needs to be discussed and explored.
So what is the direction of the board at this point with administration's recommendations for 11-12 and hybrid?
I don't support that. I think I've been very clear on what my position is. I just don't support it. It's, there's, we're throwing out words like mandates and all this other kind of stuff, but I don't think we're, I don't think we all really understand what the mandates are, and what we are supposed to do, and what we're not, what's required, and what's mandated, and what's recommended. I think that there's a lot we can do, and I agree with, and I would love to participate on whatever group this is going to turn into. But my position's not going to change. My position is that I want to put a plan in place to bring the kids back to school over a period of time. I said by the end of the first quarter, so we could start understanding what that looks like. And if we come across obstacles, then we will have to say, can we achieve that obstacle? Can we remove that obstacle? Or has that become a barrier that we can't get by?
The lunch is a barrier we cannot get by.
I don't know that.
We do, though.
Based on what?
Because you put, okay, you need square footage, you need six square feet, or six feet around an individual. There's only so many kids you can, you can, you can...
Maybe we have to bring in a half a dozen trailers.
Okay, that's fine.
Right? Is that an option? Well, I mean, I'm just sitting, I mean...
Sure.
Is that not an option?
Make a motion, bring them in the 12th. Sure.
All right, everybody take a breath. I just... Kids out the whole entire year. I mean, that's, come on, Tom, that's, come on, come on, come on. That's the direction we're going, because we're just keep pushing this out further and further. And before you know it, we're going to, it's going to be December, or we're going to be talking about whatever. I mean, we just, we just, whatever.
Might be December, but also, I think we're, I'm hearing two different schools, distinctly two different schools of thought. Tom, you want to build this from the bottom up. And I feel like the administration is looking at it from, here's where we are, let's build around that. So you're coming from two different...
That's an inaccurate statement.
Well, that's what I'm sensing, that you want to build from the bottom up. And there's nothing wrong with that. That's a good plan in and of itself. I'm not saying one plan is better than another. I just don't also, I refuse to give the community false hope that on or before November 12th, we're going to get everybody back in the building. That would be false hope, and I'm...
We just gave them false hope that we're going to do a hybrid first day of the second marking period. You just did the same thing. Yeah, you did.
The administration recommended that that is the path that we take.
That's false hope.
It's not false.
We don't know if we're going to achieve that.
No, we don't. It all is based on the metrics and the mandates at the time.
So whatever the board wants to do at this point, I just, I just can't, I can't. We're wrapped into this little bubble, we're not going to get out of it. So let's move on, it's 10 to 10.
Well, I do think that we still need to give direction. The full board needs to give direction to Dr. Gooden as to how to proceed. We've heard from Mr. Schaefer, you'd like to look at something sooner than November 12th, and perhaps an alternative to the hybrid. Would that be accurate to say?
Yes.
I wish I would have thought of that.
Dr. Wright?
Yes, that's, I'm in agreement with that.
Mr. Jackson? Yes or no? Would you be in agreement that you would like to give direction to the administration and to Dr. Gooden to look at a variation of the hybrid model? Just build it up from the bottom up to get the kids back on or before the first marking period? And however many kids will be determined by the metrics and the mandates?
You know, being a dumb engineer, I look at this from a different perspective. And my question is, is it achievable? I don't want to sit here and vote on something that's not achievable.
Per administration, at this time, they do not feel that it is.
They do not feel it's achievable.
You do not feel that it would be achievable, correct? Is that correct? Reasons that he stated.
We are requesting the administration move forward in something that they're telling us they can't achieve? Am I reading that correctly?
At this time, we're asking them to go back and further evaluate for an alternative hybrid on or before the 12th. Even want to call it hybrid. However you can get the kids back, and whatever the safe number is to bring back.
So it may be a blended model for, so I think, I think that may be what we're, what we're starting to talk about a little bit. So what I heard, Dr. Gooden, I believe I heard you say that, given the size of the cafeteria and the alternative spaces that we have within this building as an example, we do not have enough space to feed our students. Whether it's here, whether it's in the 5, 6, 7 building, there are limitations in certain buildings that will prevent us from being able to accommodate our students. And that is a problem, and that is a barrier. And that's part of the reason why administration offered the hybrid model. However, there may be opportunity for administration to go back and reevaluate whether or not we could do more of a full in-person at the case six level with a hybrid 7 through 12 as an example. And that may allow us to get more students in more frequently and have a greater touch with our students as another alternative. So more of a blended model to, as a, I think that's what I'm hearing. And I know Mr. DeBello is, you know, still wants 100% of the students back in. I'm hearing that the facility limitations, and Mr. Jackson, as an engineer, I think I just heard you say, you have significant concerns about the structure and being able to truly accommodate our student population, given the physical space limitations.
Okay, try to keep...
Does that help?
Stay on.
Yeah, clears mud, but we say in November 12th. I would support this if it's done in a structured approach that we are meeting on a regular basis to assist the administration as much as we, as much as we can from a board, that we're not spacing this out weeks to meet. And then we get something, we don't like it, and I just want to help as much as we can, Dr. Gooden. And if we can approach it from that manner, I'm on board with this. If it's going to be two weeks here and two weeks there, we're going to have the same issue again.
Just an idea, to your point. And, you know, could there be, you know, a unique committee that's formed with a few members of the board here that meets with the administration, that comes up with something that's collaborative? I've not seen that happen yet, and I think that might make these meetings go a little faster and possibly be less frustrating. So allow me to propose that, please, that we work collaboratively together on what does it look like to open school? And that's, that essentially captures my feelings and also my largest concern about just getting this, you know, thrown at us without any advance notice, really. So that would be my suggestion.
Would there be any possibility that we don't take a one-size-fits-all approach to this? And going on what you said, Mrs. Milton, is perhaps this, what the administration has come up with would work for the high school, but perhaps for the, you know, the elementary levels, we could send them all back. And maybe at this, looking at the same date that possibly, especially, you know, and maybe not even every single elementary school, because I understand some are more crowded than others. But, but even looking at it from that angle, I'm like, everybody doesn't have to do everything at the same time.
And they might be able to do it. So what I'm hearing, and please just nod your head, would be direction to administration to consider a blended model, moving the students back into the classrooms as quickly as possible on or before November 12th.
You going to do a roll call? I'm fine with everything except blended. We're introducing solutions into, I'm fine with us building, as I've said all along, building a plan to what it will look like to bring the kids back to school.
I'm just more comfortable with this. I, I think that they've done a ton of work, and committees have been doing work all summer. I thought we've got a lot of information. I feel like as a board, if you didn't have enough information, it was your job to go get more and talk to people, which is what I've been doing. And I also feel like it's a giant structural issue. We just have, we can't space these kids out enough, especially in the high school. And so I'm, I'm more comfortable with letting him drive this, my personal opinion.
I agree with Linda. We all know this is a moving target. And we gave Dr. Gooden a target to work towards. Okay, this is what we'll do for the first marking period, and we want to plan for the second marking. It could even be different for the third and the fourth marking periods, for all we know. No two days has been the same since this pandemic started. So I greatly appreciate the time and effort that they put in to, given the plan for where we are now, and we don't get a choice on where we are now. You know, it's mandated by various federal agencies and health agencies and concerns and parents and everybody else. But this was the target at the time, based on the information that we have, that we can plan for. Now, hopefully, you know, by maybe early December, there'll be significant changes. And for the next, you know, marking period, we can make dramatic improvements and open up even more and not have the list of obstacles that we have right now. We have a lot, we have a lot of obstacles. So I think we have to kind of keep that in mind when we're trying to work with Dr. Gooden on, okay, this is where we are. That position may change, but for right now, this is what we're going to work toward. And we can improve as we go along, depending on what the situation is as we go along. So those are my feelings.
Well, thank you for that. And I think I want to go back to what Dr. Wright and then Mr. Schaefer reiterated earlier about Schaefer. I'm sorry, about, uh, yeah, about forming a committee. And I don't know if that's essentially, if that's something that we want to do or as my understanding was when we were completing the templates, that many of our neighboring districts had board members that were on those committees. And, and none of us were involved in that. And I wonder if that didn't make it a little bit difficult for us navigating that, to not have that representation. So perhaps, Dr. Gooden, you might consider having or, or taking the direction that there are board members that would be willing to be a part of that group that you have, part of. You, I know you have the different, I don't want to use colors. So part of those one, two, and three groups that you had that are now looking at continuing evaluating where we are in virtual. I know that the recommendation was for hybrid, which seems there may be a twist on that and direction from the board to look at a blended model. And then move, and then move forward to all in. So perhaps that could be a consideration. And I believe the efforts of the board or the direction of the board to go back and, and, and look at that, that model to happen on or before November 12th. Maybe in a, in a different light or seeing if there's some alternative to that.
Yes.
They're still working.
So as they're working, perhaps it would be fruitful to have a few members of the board join those and then be able to come back and share that information as well. I think at this point, we've spent a lot of time on that. And if there are no further comments on that, I, I did have just two other questions. Could, when you go back to the extracurricular piece, could you clarify?
Wait a minute. You just changed directions from what we're talking about 15 minutes ago.
But you said that we were done. You were done, you were done, we were done, we were done. What is the question that, do you still have a question on the table? Did you have, I believe your question was answered.
My statement was just for Dr. Gooden. I'm not an educator. I don't think Mr. Schaefer is unless I'm incorrect there. So the offer of assistance is just to look at it from a board perspective. That's it. Nothing more, nothing less. Um, a lot of the issues that we talk about seem to be facility related. So I mean, I would say get Mr. Hunter knee deep in this. Just, just a suggestion, Dr. Gooden. I, I'd say, I'd say you haven't.
Was there something else?
I, I, I still have no idea what we're doing. We, we went from having a committee work with administration to put together a plan that was originally what Schaefer said. Schaefer said that I'd like to see options about what this hybrid, or maybe we don't call it hybrid, but how we would get to that. And I think you agree to that and Clinton. And then we, then which turned into potentially a blended option of that. And I said, well, I don't like the word blended, but what I'm, just put a plan in place to now we're putting board members on these three committees, which I didn't even know that these still existed. To now you're asking questions about extracurricular.
That's right, because we spent a great deal of time. And Mr. DeBello, you did say that you were done. In fact, you said, I give up repeatedly. So the rest of the board mostly had given direction to Dr. Gooden to look at an alternative to the hybrid model that was recommended on or before November 12th, with Linda and Diane saying that, you know, we just need to take it slowly is what I, what I have.
So then the, this committee that they're talking about isn't going to exist?
Not a committee per se. We have three committees in place that are still active. And in previous conversations at this table, we have discussed that at other school districts, they are on, there are board members on the committees. So would it be possible to have those existing committees invite input in or observation or what have you, the board perspective on those committees that Dr. Gooden, you're actively working with in our attempt to still further get us back into the classroom? That was the ask.
So can I?
I just want to make sure, Dr. Gooden, are you, are you clear? Are you, is that correct to you?
So what we're now doing is we're discounting all the work we've done. That's what we're doing. And for the opening of school or for the second quarter, we're to come up with a different plan with board input to try to get students in school.
No, you're not discounting any of the work that any of you or your administrators have done.
Well, that's, that's exactly what we're doing. Just, I don't know, make sure I'm clear on that. That's exactly what we're doing.
In my opinion, it wouldn't be necessarily discounting the work that's been done. It's bringing an alternative to the board table. It's not saying that we're taking what you've done and, and throwing it in the trash, but rather laying out a couple of options, a couple of different plans, a couple of different ways to approach it, talking through some of the challenges, understanding some of the hurdles and barriers to each of those plans. There are going to be pros and cons on both sides. And so this would give us an opportunity to really, as an, as a group, have a better understanding of what the best direction is. And very well, we may end up saying the hybrid model, exactly what you have put together and presented is the right way. But understand, you know, you know, again, not knowing what other considerations have been given to alternative models, including the word that Tom, Mr. DeBello doesn't like blended or other types of, of models. I think that's where we were asking for, for some additional information and additional opportunities or options.
Really is taking everything that you've done and now doing a deeper dive to see that if you can go ahead and put that twist on it and bring anybody else that. May, I, I, I think we all understand the numbers are too high to bring everybody back, especially seven to 12. I'm not sure that that is being discounted by anybody here. We're saying, what are those obstacles? Can we get around those obstacles? And if we can't work through those obstacles at this point because of whatever, whatever those reasons are, whether they're mandates, whether they're metrics, whether it's guidance, if we can't work through those, what alternatives do we have to enhance the education in that, that middle level? So I, in no way do I want it to go back that we're discounting anything that you and the administration have done. If not, we're, we're using that and saying, let's build on it.
Dr. Gooden, let me try to give you some support here. Ms. Fazini, give me your opinion again. I, I heard it, but I didn't hear it to me on what Dr. Gooden presented.
Um, well, I think he presented the way he thought he could safely.
Okay.
Uh, according to the science at the moment, the way to safely get as many people in staff, students, administration, and to protect the community in, into these buildings. And that's what three teams, large committees that have included Chief Boyer, Bob Hunter, curriculum, nurses, medical community, people who have medical experience, administration and teachers have been working on all summer. This is the way I saw it and that, and I feel comfortable with that. I also feel like they've been working on it for a long period of time. I've been reviewing it. When I have questions, I've been calling. So I don't know. But I'm comfortable with this decision.
Okay.
Are there any additional comments on this piece before we move on?
I, I actually just had something, which is on, on another point of Dr. Gooden's presentation.
Before we jump on that, let me just, just make sure I'm, I'm, because I, I, I do this, this happens a lot. I, I walk out of a meeting and there's been a lot of things said. So my understanding is between now and November 11th, November 12th, I am to pull together a, a team that includes board members who'd like to participate and try to come up with a scenario by which we can get as many students as we, as we possibly can, which I, I believe that we've done that. But be that as it may, we revisit that and try to look and see if there's other twists that we can put into play. Correct? Is that pretty much it?
Well, the, the board participation on the peripheral is optional. You can say, I prefer not to have the board there. And listen, my feelings are not going to get hurt. I, nothing bothers me. The, the other item is I would suggest that we don't wait to the 12th. If you get to a point where you're into end of September, hey, Springford Board, this is not going to work. We know right then and we can move from there. I would, don't wait till November to say it's not going to work as soon as it's determined that, you know, my successes and predecessors are not going to work. Tell the board and we will move with where Ms. Fazini talked about.
I would add that if some of the board members feel very strongly about things that should be added to what they're already planning or directions that they should, should be going in, just tell them and let them take it into consideration.
Yeah, as long as you can see that progress as, you know, if, if we're doing an enter steps, like we've got a model and, you know, this is the first month, this is what it looks like. The board can look at it and give input instead of waiting to the end. And that's just part of the project management, simple approach to it. So. That's a great, great, for an example, Dr. Gooden, in this cafeteria for a lunch period, how many students can you not get in here?
I'm not sure right off what that number is. And I'm not sure if anybody's on the, is anybody on the call from the green committee?
Yes, Doc, I am. We know that our cafeteria, we were planning that we can't exceed 250 students by capacity right now for gatherings. And also in consideration, the, the six-foot social distancing. We know that that space, the cafeteria, we have to expand into the auxiliary gym just to maintain the six-foot social distancing for those, uh, at hybrid lunch model, which is approximately 350 students between the, uh, gold and blue teams, if that makes any sense.
So what happens if we incorporate the other gym?
Again, i- it's going to be a math equation for the total number of students, six-foot socially distance. Uh, based on the numbers that we have, we would probably have to expand past that as well. If you're talking about fitting the whole student population in at one time.
Well, you're not talking about putting the whole student population at one time. You're only talking about putting a, what is this? There's three lunch periods. So you're talking about 600 students per lunch.
Correct. We, we, we know our, our largest lunch is in and around, I believe, it, it's 700.
Yeah, yeah, we're closer to 700 than 600.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Are there any other questions or comments?
I just want to make sure Dr. Gooden's good with this. So I don't want him to, you know, I don't want to, I don't want you to feel like we're boxing you in on anything. That's not the intent. If, if you say, hey, Springford Board, Mr. Bello, Clinton, Dr. Wright, this is not going to work. I respect that.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm going to move on to my question on the extracurriculars. Okay, for, for clarification, well, you can piggyback. You can piggyback. For clarification, the fall sports and the marching band, including the middle school, will follow the PIAA, the PAC and the HSA that we have here. Correct. Okay. And we're not interrupting those, but we do, um, we do have to follow whatever those regulations are that come out from those organizations or those entities. Otherwise, they stay intact. And with that, did you want to piggyback on the other piece about the other ones?
Yeah, well, I guess part and parcel of that is obviously we're going to continue to move forward with the, with, with the athletic and MBAM programs as long as makes sense. Obviously, we, we have one reported case so far. You know, if that explodes, I would, I would anticipate that we would, as a board, as a, as a district, reevaluate that. But certainly if there's other guidance from PAC or PIAA or anybody else, that we would have to follow that as well. But in terms of the other extracurriculars, especially those that are in the building. And it gets, I, what, what I was confused with a little bit was I saw in your presentation that we approved the extracurriculars. And really what we did was we approved the contracts for the, for, for the staff to staff those extracurriculars if and when they occur. My question to you is really, what is the plan with extracurriculars? Will there be extracurriculars that will be initiated at the beginning of the school year virtually? If so, is there a way that you could provide to us kind of a, a subset, that list? Or, or perhaps it comes from the different buildings? I'm not sure. You know, if, if I remember correctly, there's an extracurricular coordinator at each, at each level. Perhaps they would be able to provide that information to us and it could be compiled and shared with the board. It, we just don't know what's happening, what's not happening. I think I've heard the tech club maybe would start early, but maybe reading Olympics wouldn't. So we just don't, it, it would be helpful to have a, a better handle on what that is at this point.
Make sure I'm understanding what, what the ask is. Which clubs, which activities are going to be able to start in our virtual, at the start of school?
Exactly. That was a, just, you know, just so we, I mean, again, there's, because again, I see there's another extracurricular, there's another list of extracurricular contracts we're talking now. I think we're over, you know, 120 or so extracurricular contracts that, that have been presented to us. And that's only for fall and full year. So really having a better sense of what, what will be moving forward and what will be on pause would, would be helpful.
Mr. Schaefer, are you having a committee meeting? When is that first committee meeting of this?
That is the second of September. Yep, the first, that's what I said. Um, and so actually, if, if this is a good idea, perhaps that agenda might include a summary.
I think that could just come to Dr. Gooden and he could distribute it to the board through a Friday memo. Just, just so we have that information.
All right.
There is a, you know, there being an extracurricular kind of liaison for each of the different groups. I think that, that should be able to be pulled together fairly easily.
Any other comments, questions on Dr. Gooden's superintendent report? Mr. Fitzgerald, do you have a solicitor's report for us this evening?
It's just very brief. On the board agenda this evening will be the first readings for modifications to policy 103 and 104. Those are your non-discrimination, both in employment and student, student-related matters. This is not because you had an out-of-date or problematic policy. It's with regard to the Title IX changes. The actual effective date for those changes has passed. It was the 14th. But by moving through first reading tonight, we will be evidencing, say, to the Office for Civil Rights that we are, are proceeding to those, those changes that will then come forward very shortly for, for ratification.
Do you have any questions on this? Okay, moving on through the agenda, the minutes A and B, questions or comments? Personnel is A through G. Questions or comments on personnel?
The only question or comment I have with G. when you present the extracurricular contracts, could you try to do it a little more consistently? I think last, two weeks ago, it was presented to us and it was, I think, alphabetical by activity. Today, it's alphabetical by last name of the employee. It's just hard for us to kind of really be able to put that, mesh that all together to really be able to see the whole picture.
Hey, finance, A through H. Programming and curriculum, A through D, questions or comments?
We already did D, didn't we? We made D as an action item.
Mr. Fitzgerald, where are we with B and C? Have you had the opportunity to review those contracts yet?
This would be the seesaw and the near pod, correct? I believe we are in completion mode of it. It's not finalized yet and most of it's dealing with privacy-related issues, but we are finalizing that.
Okay, thank you.
Conferences and workshops, A, questions or comments? Other business, A through C, questions or comments? Hey, board comment?
I have a couple of questions or comments that I'd like to make. One of them, I just did want to verify that due to some emails that I've received from people within the community, that the extracurricular activities that included like band or something are on track to begin on, begin. Is that correct, Dr. Gooden? That the extracurricular, I'm sorry, I know, I know it's hard to see. That the extracurricular activities such as band also is, there's a plan in place for that to begin? Okay. And then also regarding the tech club position also, are we, that is also slated to begin? Will we find out about that? I just, I had a parent concern that it was not, had not been approved or not. So is that, if that isn't, is it something that we could look into? Because I don't know that there would be a reason that it would not be starting.
The only reason I can think of is finding an advisor if it's not on the list, which I don't see it. So that's really the obstacle to that, just finding the advisor to do that for us.
Okay, great. So if there's any questions or concerns, they can, that they can contact administration. Great. The other thing that I wanted to speak of is Mr. Olson had mentioned that he'd asked if there'd be more accountability for mental health than safe to say something. That information I know is on the school website. More access to our mental health, which we've talked about the importance of that. It's under students on the webpage, under suicide prevention, things like that. I would ask that that information be moved to the forefront of our webpages, maybe on the different school sites, so that it was more prominently displayed. So because it is, the information is all there. So, okay, is that something that we could do? Have it moved around? Okay, great. Thank you. And then the last thing. Even though we are starting virtually very soon, I would just like to make, take the opportunity to say, you know, good luck to the teachers and the students. We don't have that opportunity before now. Even though it is virtual, it is still the beginning of the school year. And many parents, students, and staff are very excited about this time of year too. So we don't want to overlook, it might not look the way we had hoped. But, you know, we're still in the business of educating students and that's really a good thing. So congratulations, congratulations to all of them as they begin this school year and good luck.
It starts at September 7th, so you've got plenty of time to thank the teachers.
I just have one question. Mr. Jackson, earlier you had suggested that we meet more frequently. And I know that we do have a regular board meeting next week. Were you suggesting that we begin meeting weekly, like in September again? Or what, just so that we can all begin our calendaring and planning appropriately?
I am a strong supporter of collaboration, which results in meetings, which results in finding out hiccups. I would like for us, we still have a lot of issues, don't use the word issues. We have a lot of issues that we have to address. I live in the real world, the issues. And I think we need to meet as much as humanly possible. If the president can't meet, I think we should meet if the vice president can't meet, we need to meet. As long as we have a quorum, we should be meeting. It cuts down a lot of the what-ifs, the crazy emails. It helps Dr. Gooden and his staff. Because if something occurs, we can address it at that point in time, give a proper direction. So my simple question is, meet as much as humanly possible. Because most of us are home anyway, well, working, but. So come to a meeting and let more people in when we come to the meeting.
So is everybody comfortable with adding that?
Well, what about, we have the committee meetings on the first two weeks of the month. So that's taking up those Mondays and Tuesdays. I agree with you because I would rather have multiple shorter meetings than have five-hour meetings every week, every other week. But it's just a matter of when they would have to be scheduled.
Fitzgerald, what are the other school districts in the area doing? How frequently are they meeting? What is the plan going forward into September?
Well, I've come to realize every district is now different on this. It's, every district is different how they're handling this. Districts are certainly meeting more frequently right now, especially over the last, you know, several weeks. I don't know what they're doing as they get back into the regular course. But there's more meetings. I don't know if it's every week, but it's certainly more meetings. I can attest to that.
I almost wonder if we don't look at the calendar and, Dr. Gooden, would it be more advantageous if we kind of went on every other instead of the last two? And I guess my thought with that is then if something comes up, you need guidance or you need us to vote on something or you need help, you know, support with something. We're more timely available as opposed to having to wait to the end of the month. I don't know, just as a thought.
Wait, I should have watched the video. We have a lot of parents out there asking a lot of questions. And I don't have an issue with them asking questions. I don't have an issue, if they want to come at me, I'll respond to them. But if we're meeting, hopefully we are being able to ask, to answer their questions. You know, they're out there for a reason. You know, we had the little group out, the parents and kids out. I'm a parent, still has a kid in this district. I have questions. So I think if we're able to meet and answer the questions, and most of them are fair questions, because if we look at the questions we get here in person and the questions we get in the emails, they're very similar. So as we say in the South, everybody can be wrong. So I support the meetings. I support answering the parents' questions. And I, again, support allowing the parents to come here and speak because it will just improve the dialogue with the parents. I mean, there are a lot of pissed-off parents, put them highly. And their greatest joy are the kids. And they just want to know what we're doing, how we're doing, and when we're doing it. And that's my board comment, by the way.
I'd like to just offer a word of apology to the board and specifically to Mr. DeBella down there. He and I have worked together a long time and I do not want to be offensive to him or to raise my voice. I don't, and I apologize. I just, I apologize.
Believe me, Dave, if I felt offended, you would have known. Because if you don't know me by now, I would have ripped into you. But I was not offended. So did we ever put the Chromebook requirements up on the website where it was easy to find for the parents that kept asking what version of Chromebook we're getting? We did. Is it easy to find? No, just pull your mask down and just say yes or no. Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you.
That's actually a great question. I've heard a lot of people this week saying that they wanted to know what those requirements were because they're interested in purchasing as we start this virtual.
Mrs. Zazowski, I would just like to ask the board to please notify me the dates that you guys would like to meet because I do need to run a legal ad for those dates, since they're not regularly scheduled meetings.
I think we asked Dr. Gooden to think about that. We'll all think about it and then come back next week and firm that up.
Did we make a reference to the status of the teachers?
Was a statement that went out that was shared with us in the memo. The statement was shared with us in the memo. Dr. Gooden, do you want to elaborate?
I'm talking about the community. Yeah, the community. They need to know.
Was there a statement made to the community regarding the teacher status? And the flexibility with the encouragement to be there?
Oh, okay. We notified, we notified the staff. I'm not sure that anything went out to the community. I don't think anything did. It wouldn't, but I know we notified the staff.
I don't understand why we wouldn't share with the community. That's, I wouldn't want to know as a parent. I keep forgetting I am a parent. So I think it's something we should share with them. Unless the board thinks differently, then I would really like to know why. But.
Here comes Aaron Crew.
I don't want to be a microphone offender by not using one. The notification can go out. We typically send it in a weekly update or back-to-school newsletter that would be coming out this week.
Yes, in my world, we're still going back to school on August 31st. But I think it's something we should communicate. It is a major component which allows the parents to plan accordingly. So I think we should notify the community.
Notify the community what?
What are the teachers doing? Oh, okay, right. That's all I'm saying. It's a big, it's a big issue.
In the updates.
I don't know. I'm waiting for somebody to step in and say, yeah, this is what, this is what the teachers were told.
Well, Dr. Gooden, did you want to do that and elaborate on that for us?
Yes, we notified the teachers. I'm not sure what the question is.
What, that they are going to have?
Yes, that they had flexibility and we, that they had flexibility in where they worked. We encouraged them strongly to come in. But we understand there's individual circumstances, but yes, they were notified. Is that what the question is?
No.
Oh, it's not?
The question was to simply notify the community, the parents. That was my question. Nothing to do with the teachers or the board, just to notify the parents.
All right, any more board comments? Is there any more, is there anything anybody else wants to say this evening before we move into public comment? Okay, with that or on that note, we'll move to public comment to be heard. Again, it would be two minutes per speaker, please, and thank you very much for that. There is no hour cap on it, but thank you.
Kelly Olson, 711 Sowerwood Lane. Please help us by realizing the following. Kids are not social distancing. They haven't been doing that all summer. Sports are going full force, and I know it's a go-for-sports right now. But they've been doing that all summer as well without one deadly outbreak. And I say this to point out that there may already be a large immunity to this, that it may not be as big of a deal. And hopefully it's not in the fall. Number two, can I suggest that another, that another better survey goes out to see that would take count, excuse me, of every single student? Would they come back? Would they not? Chances are you'd have a smaller population to work with. Perhaps the seniors could be the first ones in. Lastly, I encourage the administration to continue to work, continue to strive for better. We appreciate what you're doing, but this is Springfield and we expect a high level. Don't throw your hands up. These kids need you. Your students need you. Thank you.
Roland Olson, 711 Sowerwood Lane. Just want to start out, Ms. Melton made some great points earlier. Let's get, let's find out what the challenges are. Let's go to work as a group on these issues. Dr. Gooden's team is under tremendous pressure. They have limited resources to marshal everybody's efforts and thoughts to get on these things, like the lunch issue. I mean, we're fielding texts and emails for people who have ideas on that already. Let's brown bag half the class. The other class, half of the class gets a hot lunch if they want. Maybe not every kid has to have a hot lunch. Why do we have to even use the cafeterias? Pottstown, I think, brown bags all their kids. So keep a portion in their classrooms, portion in the cafeterias. There's not as many kids coming to school because they want to stay in red? Well, that's that much less than we have to worry about. We can go to 700 to 350 in a flash using some of these ideas. I think it was Mr. Jackson said there's a lot of ticked-off parents out there. Got a lot of highly motivated parents, want their kids back in school. Let's, they feel like they have no voice. They want to be part of the solutions. They don't want to be complainers. They want to be involved. Give them things like this to work on. We encourage you to throw your challenges out to the groups, to the public. Let us come, let us help. Let us be part of it. You know, if we can help get our kids back in school, so much the better. So it's great that you guys are volunteering to come up with it yourself, but you don't have to. Let everybody be part of it. We've got 8,000 kids and a million crazy parents. They're going to come up with some good ideas. So let's do it. So that being said, I just want to say thanks for the opportunity to speak. I hope we all can continue to collaborate and get these kids back in school safely and effectively.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anissa Olson. And Mr. Catalano, do you have any hands raised on the Zoom?
Yes, quite a few. First up is Gabrielle Deardorff. Gabrielle, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name and your full address, please.
Hi, this is Gabrielle Deardorff, 704 Collin Court, Royersford. I just honestly don't even know where to begin. It seemed like such progress had been made where the boards seemed to all be on the same page in meetings previously, and today was a mess. To reiterate what Mr. Jackson said to Superintendent Gooden, tell the board now, or whenever you're ready, that this isn't going to work. I want to encourage him to say it's not going to work because it's not going to work. The kids cannot go back to school in November in brick and mortar, in person, red, blue, purple, whatever you want to call it, when flu season is about to hit. You don't want to understand and accept, certain board members are who I'm speaking to, not all of the board, what the superintendent, what administration has put forward because you're in complete and total denial about the science of what is going on. And same with the parents. You think because I don't want my kid in school that I'm okay with it, that I support Red, that I am not devastated that he won't be there? It's a joke. You're wasting everyone's time. Thank you.
Next up is James Panarella. James, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name and your full address, please. James, you have to unmute. Next up is Mary Jo McNamara. Mary Jo, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name and your full address, please.
Hi, Mary Jo McNamara, 187 Abbey Drive.
Hi, Mary Jo McNamara, 187 Abbey Drive, Royersford, PA. I'm sorry, I can't be in person. I'm with you all in spirit. So I was really encouraged by the meeting tonight. I thought we were doing great until slide four or five of Dr. Gooden's presentation. We stepped backwards. We have a saying in my industry to take the happy path when trying to define a solution. You define the goal, you define the assumptions, the risks, the dates, bring them forward to mitigate. Have public forums. Let the parents be involved in solutioning in some manner. The perceived view of this board is rejecting solutions by parents, not allowing question and answer periods. That's the perceived view. I think that, I'm sorry, the longer that we stay out, the bigger the divide between our students is going to be. Parents that have the resources are hiring teachers. They are creating pods. Parents that don't have those resources are stuck working a job. Ones that are preschool, trying to take care of the kids that are in school, and there's an advantage that's going to happen. The longer we stay out, the bigger that divide is going to be, you guys. We have to get the kids back in school. Use the survey results. 54% said they come back. Your population is in half already. Send out another survey. Get a better count if you need to. We are brilliant in this school district. We have ideas. There are things that people can come up with. We can solve this. Thank you.
Next up is Stacy Addy. Stacy, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name and your full address, please.
Hi, this is actually her husband, Eric Addy. I live at 344 East Lynnfield Road in Royersford. My comment is to try and start moving forward. If the first marking period is virtual, use this time to get the kids and the parents and the teachers, all the information they need and the equipment they need. If Wi-Fi is a problem, expand the broadband and let the kids park in the parking lot, every other space so they can, so they can learn there. Now, if the second marking period comes up and you're still virtual, then just tweak and adjust what you have to do from the first marking period, but have a plan and order in case we do go back. If lunch is a problem and you can't figure it out, get rid of it. Put the entire student body on a modified kindergarten schedule, 7:00 to 12:30. Provide a morning snack that's delivered to the classrooms. And the kids that rely on the school district for lunch, that may be their only meal of the day, send them home with a bag lunch. And come the third marking period, if you're still virtual, re-tweak again, and if not, then branch out on, on what you did in the second marking period. My thing is to start with an idea and either branch out or debunk it and repeat as necessary. And as you all said, the information is changing daily, so in my opinion, you shall be available weekly. Thank you very much, and we're counting on you. Thank you.
Next up is Sarah. Sarah, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name and your full address, please.
Hi, this is Sarah D'Norris at 3 Buckley Circle in Royersford. Dr. Gooden, in particular, I'd like to thank you tonight for your leadership and your hard work over this full summer. I can see that you're putting safety first, not only for our students, but for our teachers and our staff and the wider community, as you said. Thank you for your words tonight. Everything about school is being reinvented right now by administrators, teachers, and parents. We are all faced with making impossible choices right now. As disappointed as I am that it's necessary to move back the beginning date of school, I do support the change in order to allow the technical department more time to prepare and deploy the technology, and the teachers more time to prepare the virtual presentation of their classroom with Canvas. The board made the decision to allow the purchase of Canvas less than one month ago. The teachers only received basic training last week. If we have such high expectations of the lessons that they'll be delivering virtually, we owe it to them to give them more time, so thank you for that. Mr. DiBello, your behavior tonight is unacceptable. You're being abusive of our administrators and your fellow board members. You need to step back and listen and try to understand. And let's be honest, if anyone else suggested bringing in trailers to expand square footage in the school buildings, you would be the first to vote against that increased cost. Setting an arbitrary date to have students back in school is reckless. November 12th is the start of seasonal flu, of seasonal flu. Please adjust your expectations. We'd all like to have kids back in school, but not if it's not safe. A global pandemic does not bend itself around the school calendar or wishful thinking. Please allow Dr. Gooden and the administrators to do their work without micromanaging. They do not need the added hours of extra evening meetings with the board and when they, when they and the teachers are already working far beyond their usual working hours. Every time I watch a board meeting, I see the administrators present their work, and then I see the board ask them to change everything. This is what slowed down the process of planning this summer, and this is why we have had to move the date of the start of school back.
Okay, thank you. That's two minutes.
Next up is Kate Doyle. Kate, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name and your full address, please.
Kate Doyle, I live at 310 Woodland Drive in Collegeville. Thank you for all of your efforts to navigate this complex and unprecedented pandemic world on behalf of our students. If you are concerned with the emotional and mental wellness of the students under the circumstances created by this pandemic, please consider the recommendations of the AAP, CDC, AMA, Pennsylvania Psychological Association, and other numerous medical organizations, and have the, have grade seven through 12 bell schedules start at 8:30 AM or later. With no need to coordinate busing, the district has the flexibility to start school at a time that enables students to achieve the sleep they need for optimal mental and physical health. Despite all of the challenges that distance learning posed in the spring, it appears that one of the unexpected benefits that you may have read about in articles in May and June may have been that a majority of teens seem to have met their biologically required sleep needs, likely associated with the later school start times established during distance learning at Springfield and across the nation, especially in schools in Montgomery County. I also ask that you encourage the teachers to work at the location that is best for them and their families and avoid any pressure to teach in the school building. Thank you.
Next up is Heather Staley. Heather, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name and your full address, please.
Hi, this is Heather Staley, 412 New Street, Spring City, Pennsylvania. I just wanted to comment the fact that I do think that you need more collaboration from the community. As someone stated earlier, we do have a lot of people who have a lot to offer. I myself am a designated infection control officer and heard several things that directly are not what the CDC is saying. There is a lot of information out there and a lot of misinformation out there. We can get these kids back to school. We can do this safely, but you need to have people who can help you navigate it. I have 20 years of experience of doing that as working as a first responder as well. I am here. I'm in the district. I am letting you know I will be more than willing to help you for free. I would like to help the children because mentally, this is killing them. Mentally, my daughter, who is normally a very excited kid to go to school, loves to go to school, I have seen that she's not liking to go to school. She doesn't want virtual. These kids, especially in middle school, really need to have some interaction with teachers, with staff, with students. I agree with a lot of what has gone on tonight, but I also think that people need to understand that it's not just the administrators, the board. Other school districts like North Penn have had their parents involved in a lot of their committees. I think that that's what we're lacking, and I think that's why a lot of parents are upset. I think if we could be part of the solution, there wouldn't be as much upheaval, and I think that there would be more ideas on the table. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Next up is Lauren Rafter. Lauren, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name and your full address, please.
This is Lauren Rafter, 4 Jessica Circle in Schwenksville. First, thank you to the board for voting on postponing the first day of school to September 8th. I believe that was the right decision, and will set us up for success better than starting in just two weeks from now. Second, to several members of the board, particularly Mr. Jackson and Mr. DiBello, please have some respect and trust in your administration team, who have clearly worked tires tirelessly on their plans for this school year during a global pandemic where nothing is ideal. The constant disrespect, condescension, and arguing must stop. And I've said this before, but when it's the teachers who are on the front line and need to be the ones prepared to teach our 8,000 children in this district, please include them in these decisions in the future. Ask them what they want and trust administration in what they're saying each school's leadership and teachers want. Lastly, please start having a pre-meeting, for lack of a better phrase, before these board meetings. You all need to get on the same page or have a plan in place prior to these public board meetings, and please try to prioritize. You spent so much time tonight trying to figure out the plan for November 12th and beyond, when there isn't even a plan in place for day one figured out. You should have spent that time helping to figure out distribution of materials, any issues or challenges with the teachers union, device distribution, teacher training, the meet, the meet, the teacher plan, and the myriad of other things that need to be figured out for the 8,000 students that are starting back in just three weeks, all of which parents, teachers, and administrators have no answer to. That's all.
Next up is Wes Mars. Wes, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name and your full address, please.
Hi, this is Wes Mars, 33 Turret Drive, Royersford, PA. Just kind of amazed me, you guys are actually using some sort of, I don't know, geometric equation to figure out how many kids can fit in the school and be six feet apart. The suggestion of trailers is just kind of wild. I mean, these are kids, they're teenagers. You can't possibly ask staff to, you know, enforce mask wearing and social distancing. I mean, these kids are going to be, frankly, we were all there, making out in hallways, they're going to be vaping in the bathrooms. You can't actually expect that these kids are going to expect or respect these guidelines, so that's all. Don't be ridiculous. Understand, you know, who we're dealing with, and kids will be kids. We can't enforce all this stuff. Thank you.
Next up is Kim Huston Houston. Kim, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name and your full address, please.
Yes, my name is Kim Houston. I live at 309 Cambridge Drive in Royersford. I'd like to comment tonight on the discussion that took place in regards to hybrid versus why we can't bring our kids back full time. In regards to Colleen's comments where she indicated Springfield can't mitigate this because of our numbers, we are in a small school, et cetera. How do schools like Soderton School District make this work? Right now, their high school has 2,209 through 12th graders. Springfield has 2,500 approximately. Soderton is, can make this work and bring back their kids five days a week, and they can give their families an option of virtual if they aren't comfortable. Why can't Springfield administrators on the board meet with them, see how they're planning to make it work? They're bringing in tents for outdoor seating, excuse me, to ensure the social distancing. They're bringing in heaters if needed. Maybe we need to think outside the box to make this work. Especially if the student cafeteria size is one of the main reasons that hybrid is now being considered for the start of the second marking period. Let's check out some of these other districts for some of their ideas, and let's see how we can leverage their creativity to try to get this to work and ensure that our Springfield kids can get back five days a week. Thank you.
Next up is Erica Love. Erica, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name and your full address, please.
Hi, my name's Erica Love. I'm 302 Tavistock Drive, Royersford. This is mostly directed at Mr. DiBello. Frankly, I'm having a hard time understanding your logic. You voted for the red plan, which keeps kids online for the first quarter, and you voted that way for a reason. It's the safest option. And now I keep hearing the phrase, bring kids back as soon as possible, when really it should to, it should be to bring teachers and students back as soon as it's safe and as soon as it makes sense. You could theoretically bring them all back right now, but they're just going to be sent home, just like all the kids in the South and all the universities who tried to, you know, start in person. And I also, the sources I heard being cited were just like parents that are doing random things or other schools. I'm not hearing sources from like actual credible resources, you know, experts in the topic when, you know, this is, this is health we're talking about. Like, these are people's lives at stake, so we should be listening to actual experts in education and healthcare, not just like random people and not just the loudest voice in the room. And I also want to voice my support for a later start time because I hear a lot of claims to care about, you know, the mental health of these students, but I don't see a lot of actual action in place to, you know, help these students have the best year as they possibly can. Thank you.
Next up is Victoria. Victoria, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name and your full address, please.
Hi, my name is Victoria Corrales. I live at 4 Chestnut Court, Collegeville, Pennsylvania. My comment is for our board members to really listen to the recommendations of the experts, and the experts were the staff and the administrators that Dr. Gooden proposed in his plan today that said, at the start of the second corner, this would be manageable, the hybrid plan. Now, a couple of board members did ask really good questions in wanting more details to the plan, which is your job to do, and obviously really good questions, like what are some more details? How can we get students to have more live classes or see the teacher more a week than maybe two days a week? Maybe having dialogue and collaboration with each other several times a week rather than arguing with each other and taking up valuable time would be a suggestion I have. But also, if this is how it started, was the hybrid was an issue, that students would only have two days real time with teachers. What if there were cameras in the classrooms and teachers taught live? That way the students see the teacher every day. Some of you are trying to run before you've learned to walk and maybe even crawl. We have to take baby steps. We have to practice and make sure that we're able to do one plan before we're jumping ahead. So I really, really suggest that we listen to our administrators and the experts and the staff and ask them those detailed questions, but I really think many people are looking for quick solutions to get students in when it's really not practical with the CDC and the suggestions of health experts as well. Safety comes first. Thank you.
Next up is Michael Lebedinsky. Michael, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, first and last name and your full address, please.
Michael Lebedinsky, 2005 Willowood Drive, Royersford. Just want to state a couple of statistics, and it's interesting that the previous caller brought up the CDC because the head of the CDC has been stating for weeks that there's no problem with in-person instruction. Montgomery County has had a total of 16 deaths in the last 54 days, with only one day having more than one death, which was three. It's been 11 days straight with no deaths, and 18 straight with less than 50 new cases in a county of 850,000 people. We really need to look at the actual numbers. I'm not sure what kind of bubble some people are living in that they think this pandemic is getting worse. It's been getting better since the middle of April. In fact, over the next couple of weeks, it's very likely that the CDC will declassify this as a pandemic. By the time we get back to school, it's very likely that Montgomery County and Springfield will be in the low strata with the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and to be not thinking full instruction no later than November, which is, Mr. Schaefer pointed out, is three months away. It's just being completely ignorant of the numbers. Thank you.
Next up is Annie. Annie, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name and your full address, please.
Hi, my name's Annie Schlichter. I live at 311 Walnut Street in Spring City, PA. Obviously, it's PA. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Gooden. Dr. Gooden, your presentation I thought was well thought out and displayed, and I also would like to commend you on deciding or making a recommendation on the red phase. Not a lot of people are living in bubbles as the last comment was made, but I certainly don't want to be that point 0001% or however the numbers are that my kids get sick. I have an 11th grader, and I have a senior this year as well. I'm happy with the phase, and I'm okay with the plan. Also, Dr. Gooden, I'd like to state that you were extremely humble in apologizing the way that you did to Mr. DiBello, and Mr. DiBello's response to you was horrid, absolutely horrid. I was very disappointed, and I am Team DiBello. You know, I think he had great points, and I think he's had great points, but I was completely disgusted by that. All the arguing is absolutely discouraging. The parents are worried. I'm worried. The community is worried, and you guys spent the majority of the meeting arguing about the second marking period when we haven't even reached the first marking period and what we're all going to do. With that being said, With that being said, again, very disturbed by this meeting, but go Dr. Gooden. You did great this evening. Thanks.
Next up is Christine Grimes. Christine, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name and your full address, please.
Christine Grimes, 2010 Willowood Drive, Royersford. First of all, I would be remiss if I didn't thank, I don't know if it's Dr. Gooden, the new principal, or the board, or all the above, for the ability to allow our seniors to take the SAT on August 29th. It is my hope and prayer that that actually happens, so thank you very much for that. The bottom line is, like some of the previous callers and the Olsons in the room, we need collaboration. It's desperately missing. We need to have parents involved. You have a very smart school district. There are parents out there, and even just community members, that have ideas that could actually be put into place to bring our kids back. And for the caller who referenced they aren't going to do that, they're smoking in the bathroom, whatever, give our kids more credit than that. They want to be back in school. It is ridiculous, the amount of bickering that's going on, but it's also ridiculous, the amount of fear mongering that's going on. If you want to talk about statistics and the fear, talk about the mental health of these kids. The CDC says these kids should be in school. And just lastly, I think it's very unfair to continuously point out the actions of one or two board members when I think everyone is at fault. I'm going to publicly say, Mr. DiBello, I support you. Thank you for all you're doing. The same with Mr. Jackson. This is very hard times for everyone, and just because somebody has an actual opinion and it may differ from yours doesn't make it wrong. Thank you.
Next up is Carrie Zaranow. Carrie, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name and your full address, please. You have to unmute. Carrie.
Hi. Hello? Hi, Carrie Zaranow, 1818 Morgan Lane. I just want to say a super big thank you to Mr. DiBello. Thank you for speaking on behalf of so many families, so many of us that can't be there. We appreciate you, we value you. Mr. and Mrs. Olson, thank you for being there. So many of us want to be there. We want our kids back. We want Springfield to be proud of all of us, and we just want the community back, everything back, and we can do it safely. So thank you to all of you.
Next up is Erica Hermans. Erica, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name and your full address, please.
Hi, Erica Hermans, 204 Abbey Drive in Royersford. So even though the motion carried with regards to public transportation for private school students, I do want to make comment because this statement did not sit well with me. There was a comment by a board member that they said if they elect to come out of our school district, they should elect to pay for their own transportation. This was said in spite of the fact that this transportation cost was already a sunk cost. There was another board member who said, "Is there a reason why we would not transport our kids that are a part of our community who have chosen to get an education elsewhere? Which of these statements is inclusive and which of these is divisive and punitive? I've had three kids in Springfield, two who will probably graduate from Springfield, and one who I chose to put into private school for personal reasons. It was the best choice for him. Let's continue to lift up all families, all families in Springfield, not the ones that you feel just deserve it."
Next up is Lee Jaeger. Lee, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name and your full address, please.
Hi, my name is Lee Jaeger, 142 Bradford Drive, Schwenksville. In regards to the change to the 7th to 12th grade schedule, I have concerns about it with the kids being online for seven hours a day, and then the potential for up to three hours of homework a night. We could be looking at 10 hours a day on, for these kids on their computer. And that is a concern for me, and I can't believe on August 17th, I'm looking at a different educational situation for my children and where to place them next. So please consider that. Thank you.
Last up is Sarah. Sarah, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, state your first and last name and your full address, please. Sarah. Sarah.
All right, last. Thank you, Mr. Catalano.
One more now.
Okay.
A Johnson. A Johnson, you may now make public comment. Please unmute yourself, first and last name and your full address, please. You have to unmute.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Catalano.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, with concluding the public to be heard, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.